Portfolio Committee Number One's inquiry into the Alcohol Consumption in Public Places Liberalisation Bill 2024. Thank you to our witnesses who are appearing via WebEx. Firstly, I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Jeremy Buckingham and I am the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room or are appearing via the net to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Now, to each of our witnesses, again, thank you very much for taking the time to give evidence today. Could each witness, starting, we'll start with, we will start with Mr. Taylor. Could you please, Mr. Taylor, and you should have received this, you should have received either the oath or the affirmation, could you please swear that before we proceed? And state your name and title.
Thanks. My name's Robert Taylor. I'm the Policy Engagement Manager at the Alcohol and Drug Foundation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Bernard?
My name is Chloe Bernard. I'm the Senior Policy Officer at the Alcohol and Drug Foundation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bernard. Ms. Keys? Sorry, we can't hear you. Sorry, Ms. Keys? No. We did hear you momentarily and then it seems to have. Hold on, there's something? Yes, we've got you. All right. Don't panic. It happens all the time. So, Ms. Keys, please, the oath or affirmation? And your name and title?
Okay, Ms. Keys, Deputy CEO, Alcohol and Other Drug Agencies. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. You came through, we did hear you, but it seems to be a little garbled. So maybe it's your microphone needs to be closer to your mouth or your volume turned up. But we will resolve that a bit further down the track. Do either or all of you wish to make an opening statement before we proceed to questions? Will you do, Mr. Taylor? We'll start with you, please, a short statement to begin the hearing.
Sure thing. Thank you very much, Chair. I'd just like to begin by acknowledging that I'm joining you from the lands of the Rundru people of the Coolang nation and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. And also thank the committee for the opportunity to appear today and apologies that we can't be there in person. Our response to this bill is predicated on the fact that alcohol causes significant harm to the Australian community. We know alcohol harms estimated to cost Australia around $75 billion in 2022-23. When broken down, this is looking like alcohol deaths being at their 10-year highest rate. Alcohol causing at least seven different types of cancer, alcohol-related hospitalisations and ambulance attendances remaining unacceptably high, and an already significant strain on health and AOD systems. So while we don't support criminalisation of consuming alcohol in public, we support a health response as we do illicit drugs. And we definitely wouldn't want to see anyone who is drinking in public being charged with an offence or facing a fine. The same time, we do think it's important, based on evidence, to provide restrictions on where people can access and use alcohol. And the evidence supports limits on access as a key mechanism to reduce harm. We believe this bill would actually have the effect of increasing alcohol consumption and therefore increasing harm. In public places, we have none of the usual RSA mechanisms to manage intoxication that we do within licensed venues or takeaway outlets, nor to monitor the supply of alcohol to people who may be vulnerable or intoxicated, including young people. We also know there's the potential of lightened risk of harm from individuals who are intoxicated. So this is a concern because we know both that women are at a higher risk from harm to others from alcohol consumption and also that men are at high risk of harm from a stranger in public places. We're also finally concerned about the potential normalisation of alcohol consumption based on being allowed to occur in public spaces and exposure to alcohol branding, two things we know that have a causative effect on someone's likelihood of experiencing alcohol-related harm later in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Bernard?
Oh, that was for both of us, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Ms. Keys?
Yes. Is the volume okay?
When she's closer to the screen, it is.
Oh, okay. I don't know why, but I'll do that. Okay, so the network of Alcohol and Other Drugs Agencies are the peak organisation for non-government alcohol and other drug services in New South Wales. And we represent 84 organisational members providing services in over 100 locations across the state. And our members provide a range of alcohol and other drug services that include health promotion and harm reduction, early intervention, outreach, counselling, withdrawal management and residential rehabilitation. NADA have some key concerns as highlighted in our submission. Firstly, we raise that alcohol is the primary drug of concern across drug and alcohol treatment services. And we're concerned at the already significant burden of alcohol use on community and the impact of any potential increase in drinking behaviour on the existing treatment system that may come from legislative change. NADA maintains a database of service delivery data for our members. And that showed for the previous financial year that 38% of people accessing treatment cited alcohol as their primary drug of concern for which they access treatment. 23% of all young people that accessed use treatment cited alcohol as their primary drug of concern. A further 21% as their secondary drug of concern. And these figures have been rising each year and are an underrepresentation as many do not seek treatment. And a recent study from the Drug Policy Modelling Programme at Uni of New South Wales determined that only 26% of people in need of treatment access treatment. So it does indicate just how significant the prevalence of alcohol dependence is. And we support the Alcohol and Drug Foundation's mention about the potential impacts of normalisation of alcohol consumption if restrictions are removed and the higher rates of consumption, the impact of that on an already overburdened and unresourced treatment system. Particularly, we note the impacts for young people as a concern and ADF site research on exposure to alcohol consumption being a risk factor for young people later in life experiencing harms from alcohol. So we would urge that any change in legislation that may lead to an increase in drinking behaviour must ensure that there's significant investment in an improved access to prevention, early intervention and treatment. We also raised the implementation of existing regulations and the potential to enable discriminatory and harmful policing practices for over-policed populations. Some approaches that may be effective in minimising these disproportionate harms could include use of liaison positions within police to engage with their specific priority groups that they represent, as well as new workers with experience of alcohol use, as well as alcohol and other drugs specialist positions within police skilled at working with people who use alcohol and other drugs. And there's a proven model like this used in mental health crises called the Pacer Programme, which would warrant consideration. So NADA firmly supports health-based and harm reduction approaches in preference to enforcement-led responses. And we support the recent City of Sydney Outdoor Alcohol Restriction Review that recommends an integrated harm reduction-led approach to addressing underlying issues, health and wellbeing impacts and the broader social impacts associated with drinking. And this review called suggested for responses that are co-designed with community, health and other services, which is important to ensure that responses will reflect the needs of cross-vulnerable groups and the needs in different locations. And there are existing evidence-based examples of outreach programmes operating, including homeless lists, mental health and drug and alcohol outreach services. And alongside these should be broad educational campaigns within community to raise awareness of the harms associated with drinking and encourage responsible consumption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to questions and we'll begin with the opposition. Mr. Raith?
Thanks, Chair. And thank you to all the witnesses for appearing today. I suppose my first question is, do these alcohol-free zones actually work? Or is it a matter that you're essentially making it illegal for law-abiding citizens to drink, but people that are disorderly and want to drink are just going to break the law anyway? Which I assume often happens. So do they actually work? Or are you just outlawing it for everyone?
I'll have a go at that, but happy to share that question around as well. I think you raised an important point. There's a couple of issues here. So one is about the overall mechanism through which we make alcohol available and the circumstances under which we allow alcohol consumption in the community. And I think there's a, we can take as a given that we do have some mechanisms in place, kind of wherever you sit on this issue, there is some RSA. We don't want to sell alcohol to people under 18. You know, we do want to probably have some limits on where takeaway outlets and licensed on-premise venues are. And then from that kind of starting point, we take an evidence-based approach to what's going to reduce harm. And we see that some of the key mechanisms for reducing harm are actually around reducing availability. And I would argue that the, you know, severe ponderance of alcohol harm in the community, as I said, alcohol-related deaths are at a 10-year high. We see it causing tens of billions of dollars of harm to the community every year in Australia. It is really significant. Over seven different types of cancer are caused by alcohol. It is a really serious public health issue. You know, tobacco causes around $130 billion of harm to the community every year. So alcohol causes over half or around half that amount, a little bit more than half that amount. And the response that we have to, the kind of public health response we have to alcohol is very different from the one we have to tobacco. There's a lot more, there's a lot greater kind of normalisation and acceptability around alcohol. And we know unfortunately that were we to have less stringent restrictions and higher availability, higher rates of access, higher rates of promotion, harm would increase. That's what the evidence says quite clearly. So to your first point, we do believe there needs to be restrictions on the way in which alcohol is managed in the community. And we think this is an appropriate mechanism. To your second point about, I guess, which is a question of enforcement, a question of, you know, you mentioned disorderly people if people are intoxicated. As Chris spoke to, we support a health-based response to public intoxication. This is a slightly, I suppose, separate issue. I know New South Wales dealt with public intoxication a few years ago in terms of what police responses were available. But we'd certainly support kind of a preventative approach to public intoxication that works with communities to reduce risk, reduce risk of harm and so on.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Keys, would you like to respond? Sorry, we're having, sorry, we're having an issue with your audio again, I'm afraid. Maybe. No, I don't know what's happening there. It's not your microphone? Well.
You mean any?
Yeah, that's much better.
Perfect, perfect.
Oh, okay. If you click enough buttons, one will work. I'm in support of Robert's response. We know from Box Arghada about incidents of harm where alcohol is available. And we, as I mentioned in the submission and opening, support community-led and health-based responses. So yeah, that's all I need to say around that one.
Thank you, Mr. Raith.
I suppose then the question is really one of balance. You could, at one end, ban drinking in public places entirely. Or maybe at the extreme other end, either not at all or only maybe some really small number of identified hotspots of intoxication and antisocial behaviour. And I suppose the difficulty for us as legislators is where do you, where do you draw the line? Or where should we, how should we get that balance right? So any advice or suggestions would be helpful of where that line is. I think probably the data shows that there's been an increase in the number over time of alcohol-free zones. But what's your suggestion on that balance?
I think I can speak in a general sense and, oh, yeah, Chris might be able to add to this. But in a general sense, we support engagement with the community as a kind of leading principle in this regard. Obviously, a lot of this is devolved to council. And so I think, you know, council probably are the best people to determine where these restrictions are best in place and how to manage them. I mean, you know, there's a park near my house where there are certain restrictions on alcohol around New Year's because a few years ago there was a big conflagration at New Year's. And that's something that council is going to know and be able to deal with in a way that the state government's not going to be able to. And through engagement with the community, that council can do it in a much better manner than probably the state government would be, my suggestion.
Ms. Munro?
Thank you. Thank you for your submissions and for appearing today. I'm curious, it sort of follows on from what my colleague was saying about, I guess, the different types of drinking. We've had an increase, I would say, of alcohol-free zones, but an increasing prevalence of problematic drinking. Is there, or what is the relationship between drinking and problematic drinking and drinking in public versus consuming alcohol in private? And is there any comment that you can make about those two differences in behaviour and their impact on social outcomes?
Mr. Taylor, would you like to respond?
Sure, sure. Look, we know that, it's a good question because it gets to the core of what we're interested in here, which is absolute harm. Right? We're not, you know, it's not alcohol consumption in and of itself that's an issue, though we do know that increased consumption leads to increased harm. But it's risk and harm that we're concerned with. We know about 76% of Australians drink. We know that of that cohort, about 34% drink in a risky manner, so exceeding the national guidelines, either for a single occasion or chronic risk over the lifetime. And we know that about 1 in 10 people that are dependent on alcohol, physically dependent, who do drink. So you've got this kind of, you know, pyramid of those kind of more and more at risk of experiencing harm. And the policy responses, it is complex in that we're kind of having to talk to everyone in this broad brush policy settings. You know, and I guess, you know, as legislators, you know, your concern is how do you deal with those at the pointy end, as well as, you know, speaking to the broader population who may not be at the same amount of risk of harm. We would say that, I think, the licencing system that we do have in place, while it, yeah, we think there's a lot of ways in which it could be strengthened and we've provided feedback around that in the past. But at the same time, it does, there's these three underlying principles in terms of alcohol harm that the World Health Organisation has identified as kind of key drivers of harm, which are increased availability, lower prices and increased promotion. And so these are widely accepted in the literature, the kind of very fundamental drives of alcohol harm. And so we have a licensing system that restricts availability and other bits and pieces. But fundamentally, yeah, we do think that these restrictions are necessary, but people can still drink. There's, you know, thousands of licensed venues in New South Wales, thousands and thousands. The number is increasing. And we've seen recent reforms, the licencing system through the vibrancy reforms, that loosen some of the restrictions around trading hours and so on, increase the amount of kind of small licences, event-based licences. So there's lots of opportunities for people to access alcohol. And we'd say this is a pretty sensible thing to have in place currently, that maintains the balance.
Ms. Bernard, do you want to contribute or? Ms. Keys?
Don't you have anything else to add other than just to support what Robert raised?
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing from me, thanks.
Thank you.
So just a little bit more specifically on that relationship between drinking in private. Like, for example, during COVID, you have this situation where people couldn't go out to licensed venues, for example, and they're going out to parks to enjoy a social beverage with their friends instead of drinking at home. But I would imagine that there were more people, for example, drinking at home during that period as well. And I suspect that drinking at home is probably more likely to lead to more problematic drinking or perhaps there's a greater risk of that kind of isolation leading to problematic drinking. Is there any evidence between the relationship of having the opportunity to go out in public versus private drinking? I guess it's about that pyramid, like how does that intersect? Or at what point is somebody at the lower end of the pyramid making their way up to the pointy end? And what's the relationship between private and public consumption?
That's a good question, not actually one I think I have a good answer for you. I'm totally right. We saw alcohol consumption increase in certain groups during COVID, drinking at home. And there are certain risks associated with it. You know, I guess probably what based on my understanding of the evidence and account would be that there's those who are more likely to experience risk of harm. And as you say, kind of drinking alone in isolation, those people are also going to have other issues that are going on, risk factors. We point to, say, evidence-based risk factors like mental health issues. It might be people experiencing family violence, people with histories of trauma, other co-occurring issues, financial stress and so on, that might be more likely to generate those kind of harm and have that kind of profile. I suppose the people, yes, if we're talking about public consumption, yes, perhaps it's a slightly different profile of a person. I don't know what the overlap between those groups is. I don't know, Chris, if you have any insights from a sector perspective, but.
Thank you. It's not an area of research I'm familiar with sadly, but a great question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddock?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Mr. Robert Taylor. So, Robert, thank you for what you and the Alcohol and Drug Foundation do in preventing alcohol, alcohol, harm related to alcohol. I know it's an important job and you do a good job. But look, I do believe that your submission and your remarks this morning would sort of lend us to think that you are distorting reality in that you say alcohol causes significant harm to the community in New South Wales every year. And you said you had a figure of a $75 billion cost. Now, no one's doubting that alcohol can be a negative in people's lives. But I would say, we've just started a new week in New South Wales. I'd say out of the eight and a half million people here, I'd say two to three million are probably going to consume some alcohol this week. And I would put it to you that in the vast majority of cases, this is either a neutral thing or a very positive thing. For example, there might be a corporate sales team that's gone out and landed a big account and they're very happy. And they get to Friday night and they go out for dinner. And alcohol is an important part of that process and they get to know their clients better over alcohol. So would you agree that while no one is disagreeing that alcohol can cause harm, but I think the benefits of alcohol consumption do tower over that harm?
I probably wouldn't want to get into benefits and costs. I think our concern, you're absolutely right. Look, a lot of people do consume alcohol without experiencing harm. Like I said, you know, there's that, but there is a heightened risk. We know unfortunately that a really small proportion of people that we meet do experience, do drink most of the alcohol. Something like 20% of people drink a really large chunk of the alcohol, maybe 50% or so. Sorry, I don't have the number on the top of my head. But we do know, and this is, I think, the key point, is that when we adjust policy settings, we get a change in alcohol consumption. And when we get a change in alcohol consumption, we get an increase in harm. And we already know, as I've said, the health system's under strain, the AOD sector system is under strain. Alcohol is the most common drug that presents in the AOD system. And we know that increases in alcohol consumption are going to lead to further strain. So that's why we support this existing restriction on consumption in public places.
Would you agree that it, I mean, most countries, I mean, not Islamic countries and some other countries don't drink alcohol, but it is a very ancient practice, the consumption of alcohol. But there does seem to be a pattern in the English-speaking world where there was in the 19th century, an effort in the early 20th century to make alcohol illegal and to treat it as though it was a taboo. It is in those countries that we see the most, not the most excessive usage of alcohol, but the most excessive negative reactions to alcohol, alcoholism and violence. It seems to be in those countries where we have had a sort of a wowzer tradition. Would you agree with that?
I'm not sure I could speak to the international comparison. I'm sorry. I'm more familiar with the Australian context. But you're correct that the, on the point of the kind of temperance movements, the kind of wowzers and, you know, this history of prohibition around alcohol. I want to be really clear, we definitely do not support, you know, a prohibition-based approach to alcohol. People should be able to access alcohol. We see, we work in the illicit drug space as well. I was actually just speaking to the committee about, a week and a half ago, about cannabis regulation. And we see that overregulation leads to great harms too. So we're definitely not supporting that. It's about finding the balance in terms of access to alcohol for people that minimises harm as a whole to the community.
Okay. And so I have a question for Ms. Bernard. So you feared that if this bill is approved, that it would lead to the normalisation of alcohol consumption. But I fear what's happening is we've denormalised it at the moment. And those countries where people can freely drink at the beach or in the park, they have a far less dysfunctional relationship with alcohol. I think the statistics are quite clear. In countries like Italy, Germany, Austria, France, where this taboo does not exist for public drinking, it's about, compared to the English-speaking countries, the amount of alcohol-related criminal offences is about half. Because, you know, we treat it, you know, you can only drink alcohol at home or at a licensed premise and nowhere else, generally speaking. And so, and we're very strict with age enforcement. And so we've made it like a forbidden fruit. And it's possible that that is actually backfiring. I know that at face value, it would seem if this bill gets approved, that there'll be an increase in alcohol abuse. But I would actually put it to you that the international experience is the opposite, that when we don't treat it like a forbidden fruit, people have a more adult relationship with alcohol.
It was Ms. Keys, not Ms. Bernard.
All right, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Keys, would you like to respond to that?
I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with the overseas experience. But I'm familiar with more local studies around the impact for young people on alcohol, like view it, the visualise, visualising alcohol consumption and the normalising of that at a young age. And that that correlates with young people experiencing harms from their own alcohol use later in life. So I refer to that experience. But yeah, I'll stick to the scope of our organisation and the experience of our members and treatment services.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Ruddock?
I'm done, thank you, sir.
I have a question before we go to the government, and that is, does, how does, if you, if we were to liberalise the statutes and the laws around public alcohol consumption, how does that make it more available? Because is it not the licensed venue, the saturation or the numbers of licensed venues? You still have to buy it from a bottle shop. So how does public, the possibility that you could drink it in public, make it more available? As you've suggested.
Yeah, I understand the question you're asking because it's not inherently. putting more alcohol out there, but rather increasing the amount of, of zones that can be consumed in. Um, when I talk about availability, I guess, sorry, I should be more specific. That, that is part of it. Um, and it goes to um underneath this kind of broad term of availability. We're also talking about the mechanisms around RSA, for example. Um, that uh, you know, young people accessing alcohol ideally. Um, that burn intoxicated people accessing alcohol. Um, and that limits on drinks and so on. So whilst those limits are, um, you know, you also don't have, I can go by slab, take it to my place of residence and none of those kind of mechanisms are in place. So there, there's already that case. But we believe that allowing that in public um would heighten the risk of harm um by making it more accessible to people. Um, and providing more opportunities to engage in alcohol consumption. And again, that normalisation factor, I haven't spoken about the advertising piece of this, but the research around brand exposure to young people is just unbelievably concerning. Um, it, it shows this really clear link and, and to alcohol consumption itself. Really, really clear strong link that, that it has a causal effect, a causal relationship with people's risk of alcohol harm later in life.
I think that's a really interesting point you make because I, like I, uh, most of the advertising that you see around alcohol shows people consuming it in public places responsibly. So the alcohol advertising, I'm just thinking of uh, of Stone and Wood. They've got an ad for beer, very nice beer, I've got to say, which is people sitting on a point, watching some surfing, cold beer, sunset, very idyllic, Corona, the same thing, drinking on a beach. Should there be a ban on those ads because they're actually in breach of the law?
There was a, a study that was just released, actually, I read um last week that showed that alcohol advertising that involves groups of people um stimulates cravings for alcohol much more strongly than those that just show uh the products themselves. So I think this is uh well thought through as part of the industry. They know what they're doing in terms of advertising.
So it's not really an issue of um, uh availability. It's more one of accessibility and normalising it for you.
Yeah, I suppose that's a fair, a fair clarification. Yeah, I accept that.
Miss Keys, would you like to respond to that at all?
No, I support Rob- Robert's response, thank you.
Mr. Borzac, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right, that's enough from me at the moment, the government, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks to all the witnesses for their evidence and submissions. Um, just on that question that the Chair was raising, I'm wondering if you're aware of any evidence to support the proposition that more visible consumption of alcohol in the community feeds demand for alcohol?
We have evidence that shows that exposure to alcohol consumption in general um leads to greater demand in young people.
Yep.
Um, as to the public case, um, no, I don't necessarily have that um evidence.
Okay. Uh, Miss Keys, have you got any response to that?
I'm also not aware of any research specifically around that.
So do you think that we're safe to assume that if the bill is passed, that there would be an increase in consumption of alcohol in public places, such as main streets and roads, and maybe Mr. Taylor first?
Yes, um, yes, we, we would expect that to be the case. As I said, when you see loosened restrictions, you see increased consumption. Yeah.
Yeah.
So can I just, can I just ask, can I just ask clarification? You say increasing consumption, increasing consumption in public places or just increasing consumption?
Um, yes, so, good question. Um, I suppose one of the, the challenges we have here is that we're extrapolating from an evidence base, which is based on kind of general principles. Um, the thing with research and evidence is it's a slow and methodical and difficult process and it's hard to make very specific claims. But we do have these kind of high level established general claims. So that's why I keep repeating, um, you know, increase, less, increased validity, viability equals increased consumption. Hard to say exactly how that would play out. I suspect, yes, it would mean in, in the public setting, um, in this case.
Um, I note that uh the bill would propose to maintain the existing laws in relation to drunken disorderly behaviour in public. So it would preserve, for example, the ability of police to give move on directions and so forth. I'm just wondering uh if you think, Mr. Taylor, that is it safe to assume that if this bill was passed, there would over time at least be an increase in drunken disorderly incidents in public places?
You would probably expect to see that, yes. That, that would, I, you know, you can't say to what extent. It may be the case that it's not really significant, but it may be the case that it is. Um, couldn't really say, but we would expect the risk would heighten, yes.
Yeah. Um, I'm curious then about your observations, um, and you, Miss Keys as well, about how you think that might impact in particular communities. So for example, you might think about a Sydney suburb, like a park in Mossman or something. You might compare that though to maybe a large regional city that might have a higher prevalence of social problems and so forth. I'm just interested in how this bill might impact differentially um across the state.
Chris, this might be um.
Miss Keys, if you'd like to respond?
Was, was the question around the impact for those vulnerable groups on the uh, on the occasions of police giving move on orders or just broadly?
I suppose more broadly. So I'm just curious about in terms of enforcement of drunken disorderly type provisions and police powers, uh but also uh the amenity of particular areas, I suppose as well. And then the other observations that you might have. But I'm just interested in the differential impact of a law like this. How is it going to play out in a hypothetical park in Mossman uh as opposed to, for example, the main street of Dubbo or a park in the Dubbo CBD? What sort of different effects might we expect to see from a statewide law like this?
Yeah, sure. Uh, we know from other submissions and hearing from stakeholders within the sector around how the current restrictions disproportionately impact vulnerable, vulnerable groups, like First Nations communities, multicultural communities, low income earners, people in social housing. I think it would follow if the restrictions were removed that the police enforcement of move on powers and other laws at their disposal around drunken and disorderly behaviour would also disproportionately impact those groups. Um, we would, we would not support a removal of restrictions that didn't see um careful uh engagement with community um by local councils to really understand the impacts in those areas and the different vulnerable groups that would be drinking outdoors in those areas to really determine what other supports, health and social would be required in order to minimise the impacts of any change.
And what are your thoughts, Mr. Taylor, on the potential differential impact of the law statewide?
Well, when um, yeah, when we talk about risk, uh, one of the things that kind of is underpinning that or the key thing underpinning risk of harm are these um, or risk factors. So this can be, you know, I mentioned, yeah, someone having, you know, pre-existing, um, for example, mental health issues, housing challenges, experiencing family violence, um histories of trauma and so on. These things, disengagement, unemployment and so on, these things um all heighten someone's risk of alcohol related harm. Uh, when these things intersect, they heighten it again.
Hmm.
Uh, these risk factors are in some cases more prevalent um in certain areas than others. We know, for example, alcohol harm is experienced to a high degree in regional remote areas. Um, we know that people, you know, you mentioned the park in Mossman. We know that people in certain areas uh have greater access to resources, financial and otherwise. Uh, that certain protective factors to minimise their um risks of harm, to give them more mechanisms for um dealing with any, any potential um risk of harm. So yes, we would expect to see disproportionate impact, the way we currently do see disproportionate impact. We know that those in the kind of lowest um income, quintile, the lowest twenty percent, even though that group um has the lowest overall drinking rate of population, has the highest rate of alcohol related harms. So we do see that disproportionate impact already.
Yeah. Um, in terms of an increased prevalence of drunken disorderly incidences, um obviously the bill would maintain the move on powers of police and powers to arrest people for criminal offences that uh might be committed in public places. But I'm just interested in, in how much is the current regime actually putting downward pressure on those sorts of incidences? So for example, the power to pour out alcohol that people find in possession of people, the broad restriction that exists on consumption of alcohol. Just wondering, how effective are those things in actually reducing the incidences of antisocial behaviour in these places?
Suppose it, look, it's, it's a deterrent effect, um, right? And, you know, deterrence um works on a certain level. The likelihood of someone getting, deterrence works based on the likelihood of you getting detected doing something, not on the side of the penalty. So if you're likely to get detected, say walking down, you know, the main street, down in Moore Road or something, and there's a lot of police that cruise up and down and they see you with a bottle, you're likely to get detected, it's likely to get tipped out. That's an effective deterrent. There are some people who won't be deterred. Um, so I think that this is a population wide um policy setting that is designed to protect public health kind of across the board. There, I suppose if this is answering a question, there will be some who aren't deterred. Um, yeah, but that, that's, that's always the case with, with um this kind of stuff.
Yeah. So how important do you think are notions of amenity and feelings of public safety? I'm just imagining if this law is passed, for example, you might see a very changed situation on some main streets of regional towns, for example. Lots of consumption of alcohol perhaps by uh very committed drinkers. And while the police will have a power to react ultimately to behaviour that crosses a certain line, they won't have preemptive powers and you won't have the deterrent effect of existing rules. Just interested in a, how much is that going to affect amenity and feelings of public safety? And how much, uh, I suppose, should we be taking that into account in determining the merits of the bill?
Um, I'll look, I'll just quickly say that, I'm sorry to answer the question like this, but we prefer not to talk about kind of public safety and instead just talk about health and, you know, the health outcomes for the individuals involved. And um, uh, so we, you know, with, with those kind of, as you put it, committed drinkers um in a regional area, we'd want to see that there's, there's a health based response for those people that, that looks at the issues that might be driving their drinking and, and tries to intervene early and provide the support required. Um, yeah.
So you spoke earlier about, you know, the presence of those sort of people having an undesirable effect in terms of normalising drinking and sending out, I suppose, a social message that it's okay to drink more. But I'm curious about other ill effects of that sort of public presence. But you wouldn't express an opinion on that?
I wouldn't, Chris, I don't know if you.
I, I feel it's beyond the scope of my organisation to respond, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose the reason I ask is that I'm someone that doesn't like to be too much in the presence of drunk people. And particularly if I'm the sober person, when you're out and about with lots of drunk people, you sometimes don't feel so safe. So I'm just wondering whether, as experts in this area, you would share that view that there is an implicit threat from drunkenness, uh, that some people will quite legitimately feel and perceive. And I'm just curious about, yeah, if you'd be willing to express an opinion about the desirability of that or otherwise. Because it is one of the ill effects of alcohol, that alcohol obviously causes people to be more unrestrained in their, um, in their behaviour and potentially violent and so forth.
Yeah, I'll, I, I can give, I suppose, two points to that. One is which, you're, you're absolutely right, and we did mention it at the beginning and in our submission, that the risk of harm to others from people who are intoxicated uh does increase. Um, you know, we know that men are at heightened, heightened risk from strangers. We also know that um women, in the context of gender based violence in particular, are at significantly increased risk. Um, alcohol can accelerate the risk of gender based violence significantly. That being said, I, one of the reasons that we're a bit hesitant around the public safety lens is that we also are really conscious of the effects of stigma on those who do use alcohol and may be in need of, of health supports. Um, and we definitely don't want to characterise everyone who drinks or people that may be experiencing harm from alcohol as inherently violent or a, a risk.
Yeah, any thoughts on that, Miss Keys, in terms of uh these potential ill effects on people's perceptions of safety that arise from the reality that intoxicated people are more likely to cause harm?
Absolutely, I, I support Robert's response. And I also note the um, the review undertaken recently by the City of Sydney, um which engaged stakeholders and the uh, the survey that they undertook showed that the majority of respondents said that they would um feel less safe if there was more drinking alcohol in, in public spaces. It, it makes sense that that, that would be one of the impacts.
Yeah. So just lastly, if there's time, the bill utilizes a drafting device, I suppose, where it creates an exception to other acts. So rather than amending individual acts, so for example, the Liquor Act restriction on this or the Summary offences restriction on this, it just creates, if you like, a defence to the operation of other laws, that you won't be guilty of an offence in relation to con- to consumption of alcohol in, in a public place. Just wondering whether you have any thoughts on the appropriateness of that device in circumstances where, I suppose, it makes the law potentially a bit unclear in the sense that you need to look at the exception and then perhaps look at all the other rules to work out exactly what the law is? Or do you think that it is an appropriate device and that it is clear? It's just a concern that's been raised in some of the stakeholder submissions.
I wish I was enough an expert on legislation and drafting to give you a response, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks. Any thoughts?
Miss Keys?
Um, I agree, uh, probably a, a better question for some of the other stakeholders that submitted.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The time for questions has passed. We very much appreciate your submissions, uh, you taking the time to appear today and for the work you and your organisations do uh in the community. It's very important and all of it's very much appreciated. So uh if there are any questions on notice, the Secretary will um be in contact with you in due course. But once again, thank you all uh very much for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone. We are now going to hear from Mr. David Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds, we have you. Uh, no, we can't hear.
I'll just, uh, let's try now. Can you hear me there, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can, Mr. Reynolds. You're coming through loud and clear. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, before we get underway, um firstly, I'd like to thank you for making the time to give um evidence. We uh very much appreciate that. Um, could I just ask you to begin by stating your name and position title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation which you should have been sent?
Yeah, thank you. My name is David Reynolds and I'm the Chief Executive of Local Government, New South Wales. And I'll proceed to take the oath now. Uh, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. Would you like to commence with a uh opening statement?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. Yes, I will. I'll just bring it over onto a screen so I can look more directly at you while I make that statement. Um, but look, thank you for the opportunity to appear before this inquiry today. As I said, my name's David Reynolds, I'm the Chief Exec of Local Government, New South Wales. We're the peak body representing all one hundred and twenty eight councils across New South Wales, as well as related local government entities. I'd like to also pass on apologies from our President, Councilor Daria Turley, AM, who's unable to appear today. Local governments, as you know, are elected to reflect and represent the views and aspirations of their local communities. They're democratically accountable to the diverse communities that they represent. And for this reason, uh, Local Government, New South Wales can't support the bill which seeks to remove decision making from the level of government that's closest to the community and instead impose a one size fits all approach across New South Wales. It's appropriate also to clarify that as it stands, we don't believe there is a statewide ban on the public consumption of alcohol in all public spaces and nor is that what we're advocating to implement or maintain. Councils see sensible placement of outdoor alcohol restrictions as helping to create a public domain that is vibrant. accessible and safe for all members of the community. The restrictions also help to reduce antisocial or unsafe behaviour and crime in identified areas of need, and also as a present preventative measure for certain types of events. Considered placement of outdoor alcohol restrictions can assist in preventing antisocial behaviour and impacts on community safety, as well as a perception that certain public areas are unsafe and should be avoided. If outdoor alcohol restrictions were to be removed, women, young people and older people may avoid more public areas due to concerns for their safety, which would in turn reduce visitation and passage through some public places. Removing outdoor alcohol restrictions may also create challenges for managing large public gatherings where alcohol is being consumed, particularly at popular sites such as family-friendly Year's Eve celebrations, for example. It also poses the risk of increased litter and environmental harm, including from glass bottles, which particularly pose a hazard on beaches. And it may threaten harm to local visitor economies as public places may no longer be considered or suitable or appealing for tourists and visitors. It's important to acknowledge that outdoor alcohol restrictions only apply to a limited number of public spaces where it's been deemed necessary following a period of consultation and engagement with law enforcement authorities. The public remains free to safely and responsibly consume alcohol in many parks and public spaces across New South Wales. And where outdoor, uh, our air, sorry, outdoor alcohol restrictions are no longer warranted, these can be removed by councils. Councils also respond compassionately where they identify rough sleeping and alcohol consumption in restricted areas. Homelessness protocols developed by councils include training to ensure staff respond appropriately and with compassion. Councils also work closely with a range of housing and homeless services, domestic violence agencies, police and specialist homelessness service providers that operate in their respective areas. And they assist with case management of people at risk of becoming entrenched in public spaces. Councils, in close consultation with their communities, strive to achieve the right balance between individual freedoms, social inclusion and community amenity, vibrancy and safety. The considered placement of outdoor alcohol restrictions is an important tool in this task. Councils are democratically elected to give voice to and reflect the needs of their communities. Local knowledge and expertise is critical to this task, and this is reflected in the careful placement and removal of outdoor alcohol restrictions. LGNSW doesn't support this bill which seeks to impose a one-size-fits-all approach to public amenity and safety, and we thank you for taking the time to see us today.
Thank you very much for that, Mr Reynolds. We'll now turn to questions from the opposition.
Um, thank you for appearing today, uh, Mr Reynolds. Um, I was wondering if you could run through with us the decision-making process for a council that would determine um, that a certain area should be a, an alcohol-free zone. Um, obviously, I assume it's voted on by the councillors, maybe on recommendation of the, of the, of the staff and who has input in that decision-making? Do they consult with the local police about what some of the hotspots are that, that, that do require, uh, this alcohol-free zone, um, category? Um, maybe if you could, yeah, run through with us what, what it looks like from the sort of start to the end of that process?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. And thank you for the question. Through you, Mr Chair. Look, uh, I, I think you're right. You've given a rough outline of, of some of the parts that would be involved in that process there. So a council would go through a process of either reviewing existing areas and renewing those or seeking to implement new areas, and they'd be done on a consultative basis, exactly as you've hinted at. Um, that would involve engagement with the police quite often, uh, about whether there's been any instances of, um, uh, events or criminal behaviour or in inappropriate social behaviour in those places that should be thought about. Uh, and that engagement's certainly taken into account. Um, having um, facilitated those reports going through councils previously myself, I know that those areas have then been publicly exhibited for engagement and consultation, and the results of that engagement brought back to council uh, for consideration of any submissions made. Uh, my experience is that's quite a good discussion with law enforcement bodies and councils. Um, and it complements the other activities of councils in those areas well, as well as public engagement. Um, councils are also doing, um, associated things around trying to, um, maximise opportunities for outdoor dining, obviously, in some of these areas. So they may have policies around outdoor dining applying in some of these places. And so they, they're aware of the intersection of outdoor dining requirements with some of these other areas. Um, but in a nutshell, yes, if an area is proposed, uh, as an alcohol-free zone, um, there's engagement with the community and with law enforcement around that, uh, there's then exhibition, there's then consideration by council of those areas. Uh, and usually therefore, therefore time-limited periods. Uh, so it's not, it, it's not an in-perpetuity designation of an area as this thing. There's usually a time-limited period. Uh, in my experience, that can be, uh, it can be sort of four years or so, and, and then they can be renewed and, and reviewed as needs be. But certainly it's an engaged and consultative process.
I'll just jump in to ask about the relationship between police and councils. And you mentioned in your submission the, um, reliance on police availability and proximity if the bill was to be enacted. I'm curious about whether your members are finding that there aren't enough police around to police existing legislation or whether, um, it's, I, I mean, yeah, that, that's essentially a problem or not.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, for that particular question. And, and look, and I think our, our caution with the bill's, um, practical effect there is that, uh, if the regulatory environment's changed such as to, to one where there's greater prevalence of behaviour that requires the police to be called to respond to public intoxication or drunkenness or antisocial behaviour, that's a, that's a poorer policy response than a response that says, actually, we've got an opportunity to manage this. We've got an opportunity to manage it before, uh, we get those circumstances, which actually require the police to be called to respond to a public incident, as opposed to these areas being well-known, uh, nuisances and things being able to be managed in a complimentary way there. Uh, and so i- if we're in a position where we've got a policy setting that allows a situation not to escalate, uh, and for police resources not to be, um, turned away from other things that are critical for their time, and we know that their resources are finite and stretched as it is, we think that's a better outcome rather than going to a, a situation where, um, they may be called more to respond to circumstances which have deteriorated as opposed to have been well-managed in a policy sense early on.
And you're saying that the, uh, appropriate management then is to say that you can't have any alcohol at all?
Uh, well, I don't think we're saying there's a, a blanket ban about no alcohol at all, and even in some of these areas, y- you can set particular time spans. So you might know that a particular time span around a, a time of day or a time of week is problematic in a particular location. And there are lots of different locations across all one hundred and twenty-eight councils. And I think that's really our submission, that it, it's the council that should be able to nuance those arrangements with its community and with its local law enforcement community as well. So we're not suggesting that we just, we turn off the tap and there's no alcohol at all. We're suggesting it should be well-managed. It should be able to be consumed responsibly in the right place. Um, but it, it shouldn't be a situation where um, a policy setting is, is turned off, which then results in, in a, a worse social and public outcome uh, and a greater strain on police resources around that type of behaviour.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to questions from.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Mr Roth.
You've got one?
I, I, one more.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, I just want to see if you had any, um, figures or maybe even just anecdotally on the sort of number of alcohol-free zones? Has it, uh, I mean, I, someone told me that it increased. Um, it's been increasing over time in terms of the number of, uh, the number of them. Did you have any, any you could share to, with the committee on that?
Uh, I, I don't have specific data to hand. I'm happy to take that on notice and see if our members can provide some of that. I, I do know that, um, the current, um, current regime allows councils to review and consider whether those, those alcohol-free zones should, should continue or whether they should be turned off. Um, but happy to take that on notice and come back.
Just.
Thank you. Mr Reynolds, does the, um, Department of Local Government, uh, keep a register of these? How, how are they? Are, are they, um, communicated to the, to a, a relevant agency or the state government? Is there, uh, like a central repository of how many, like, of not only how many there are, but where they are and their scope and scale and timing?
Uh, Mr Chair, I don't have that information. It may be a question for the Office of Local Government on that, on that particular front. I know that obviously councils report those matters publicly, so they're publicly on record through council business papers. Uh, but I'd have to take the question on notice as to whether there's then a, a central register uh, that captures the timeframe and the breadth and, you know, areas covered by, by those. Of, of course, these zones are, um, managed by more than just councils, as I think as other speakers and other debaters has noted. National Parks and Wildlife or, or other government land that's not administered by councils, of course, um, um, potentially, um, subject to some of those restrictions in places as well.
Thank you very much, Mr Reynolds. Mr Raddick?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr Reynolds, for coming along today and for your submission. So, so following on what, uh, Chris Rath was just asking, you're saying that you're not sure what percentage of public places in New South Wales currently do permit public drinking. But I, and you said you'd get back to this, but I would put it to you that it would be maybe ten to twenty percent of public places in New South Wales, it's currently permitted to drink alcohol there. Now, I was in North Sydney, uh, yesterday at the St Leonard's Park. The sign at the front says no alcohol permitted, but then you read the fine print, it says just between ten o'clock at night and five o'clock in the morning. So I would consider that just saying you can't drink in the middle of the night. Okay. I don't think many people are going to argue with that. Uh, but it means that, w- would you think that that estimate of ten to twenty percent of public places in New South Wales, you either can drink alcohol or you can drink except for in the middle of the night?
Um, with fairness, Mr Raddick, I think my question for Mr Rath was about whether there'd been an increase in the amount of alcohol-free zones over time. Uh, I think that's the part that I recall taking on notice and certainly having a look.
Okay, well, do you have an estimate on, on what, how many parks would be available or what percentage?
To your question, I, I don't have accurate data. I'd have to take on notice around whether it's ten to twenty percent. But I think, um, our understanding is, i- it's not as though things are banned and then turned back on. It, it's that there's no underlying prohibition. It's just that the matter can be regulated by a council in consultation with stakeholders and police over time.
But you do agree that there are ca- currently two categories of parks, somewhere where you can public drink and somewhere you can't publicly drink. And I'm just wondering, um, I suspect that there's, there's no difference in the level of, level of crime that we're seeing in those places where you can publicly drink. I mean, if, if there was, if, if that was not the case, I am sure that you would know about it and, and so would the public.
Yeah, a- and I think to respond to that, if I, if I look at the submissions that the enquirers received already, if I take data from the New South Wales Government's submission to this inquiry, um, they note in the Sydney CBD between two thousand and twenty-twenty, a forty-five percent reduction in violent offending in the Sydney CBD which correlated to the alcohol-free zone locations. Uh, and the inner west LGA, upon declaration of alcohol-free zones across that LGA in twenty nineteen, a reported corresponding decrease in street offences within those alcohol-free zones. Um, and the percentage dropped each year. Twenty twenty it was thirteen, twenty twenty-one it was thirty-eight, fifty percent in twenty twenty-two and thirty-eight percent in twenty twenty-three. So I, I'd say, you know, impact is not just limited to some of those outcomes, but, but looking at the data from those submissions, it would seem to correlate with, with these alcohol-free zones that they're seeing decreases. Um, that may not always be the case, but there seems to be a data sample there that suggests it is.
Well, I mean, crime overall has been dropping over the last thirty years, so it may, may be a case of a correlation, it's not always causation. But have you, are you aware of any of your one hundred and twenty-eight councils where there was a policy of permitting public drinking? And then there was associated problems and it then got reversed? Because, I mean, you just mentioned City of Sydney. My understanding is that they are, they are pushing ahead with liberalising, uh, on, on this question.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I think that's a good example of what's open to councils under the current system. Uh, councils are, based on their own local circumstances, able to review the use, the breadth and the impact of these zones. So it's quite appropriate that a council takes that under consideration. So a- as I understand it, that, that review's ongoing. Uh, there's been no final determination to that and, and no doubt the City of Sydney's keenly invested in that process. But, but I think that, to go to your point, that's a good example of how a council can consider its own circumstances.
But my key question was, have you ever known a council to reverse a park or a beach that had a, uh, a liberalised, uh, drinking policy? And then they said, no, there's too many problems. We have now reversed it. Is there any examples of that happening?
Oh, a- a- anecdotally, uh, yes, I've heard of it, but I can't tell you where. So I, I wouldn't wish to wish to speak inappropriately to the committee, but happy to take on notice and bring back some further information around that.
Thank you, Chair.
I've just got one question. Uh, we've heard that there's, um, been an increase in, uh, across New South Wales in the availability of alcohol through licensed premises. When a council is considering, um, increasing the, the, the density or uh, like, uh, considering a, a, uh, an application for a licensed premises, is a corresponding, um, declaration of an alcohol-free zone one of the things that councils, uh, considers as well to sort of mitigate, mitigate um, against sort of public disorder or when it's in, when it, when it's considering the social impact statement of a, a new licence, is an alcohol-free zone one of the things that is, um, put into the mix for councils to consider when it's, when it's um, addressing an increase in, in licensed venue, venues?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair, for the question. If I could answer this in, in two parts. One, look, I, I'm not aware that it's a technical consideration as to the merit of a development application if a council's turning its mind to the planning or the formal licensing requirement, uh, whether a council would need to implement such a zone. But obviously hours of trading, um, and hours of operation and timing of car parks and the service, uh, of alcohol within a facility is thought about in terms of those matters. Um, but clearly for its communities generally, councils work closely, uh, with their local area commanders. Um, they would often have, uh, community safety committees that may even look at things like crime prevention through environmental design. So it looks at design of parks and open spaces as they may complement these, these other facilities too. And certainly practically, um, alcohol-free zones, um, can be used to help manage traffic around these facilities, um, and to help these facilities continue to play their role in the community without, uh, without a nuisance or an impact flowing beyond their boundary too far. So we want, you know, as councils, um, as best we can, we try and make good neighbours, uh, so that people can coexist well and people can socialise and recreate without feeling like they're being regulated. Uh, and so we, we try to do that well. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Mr Lawrence?
Uh, thanks, Mr Reynolds. Just a couple of questions. Um, I was recently in a remote town, uh, in New South Wales, which has got a large Aboriginal population. And I was talking to an Aboriginal woman there who, uh, raised an issue with me, which was, she basically said to me, why are the white people allowed to drink outside, uh, certain premises on the footpath? Whereas Aboriginal people aren't allowed to drink in the parks and so forth. And I questioned her further about her concern and what, um, it transpired she was raising was that in that particular town, there's an alcohol prohibition, um, under the local government mechanism that I think applies to the whole town. Then on the main street, there's some type of restaurant or cafe that also has a licence and people are allowed to drink on the footpath outside it. So I'm just wondering if you've got any observations about the appropriateness or otherwise in communities like that one of a blanket prohibition on the consumption of alcohol, basically through the whole CBD, maybe the whole town? I'm not sure. And then exceptions of that nature for certain premises in that context?
Yeah, thank you and, um, for that question. And, and look, and I think that that really goes to the issue of each council and its democratically-elected representatives being able to respond appropriately to their community and to to very fairly and in a considered way weigh up the social issues that also go with the economic and business issues of a vibrant town centre. Um, across the state, the state government's working with councils to activate more places at night for music and for dining. Um, and that, of course, gives rise to, uh, the need for outdoor dining being licensed on public footpaths or outside restaurants. And that's, that's a very popular trade in, in many places. Um, but of course, it raises the issue that if, as you've pointed out, that if alcohol consumption is okay in one place, uh, how should it be considered in another place? Um, but it, probably not my place to speak a, a- against a particular council who's considered its circumstances and decided that that's the way I would like to like to move forward in terms of banning consumption in public places. But I think in my opening statement, um, that you also heard me refer to the work that councils are trying to do socially, uh, with people that may be rough sleeping in areas or maybe spending time in parks or consuming alcohol in those places. time in parks or consuming alcohol in those places. So councils across the state really try and get alongside many different parts of their communities at one time to try and assist and manage with those. But I think undoing those restrictions without proper engagement with councils in all locations is probably not the way forward there. I'd suggest it's a more nuanced social conversation between the council and its community about the right answer in that circumstance.
So in that situation that I just outlined, would the local council have any power over the decision to grant the liquor licence that allows the consumption of alcohol on the footpath? Or would that be purely a state licensing matter?
Well, the state's the licensing authority, but the council may have an outdoor dining policy that allows the, say, the restaurant or the premises to use, let's say it's thirty or forty square metres of dining, a footpath dining area to set up tables and chairs and serve there.
And that's on the basis that the footpath is owned by the council, isn't it?
It's a public space, yeah. So the footpath's owned by the council, so you need the licence to occupy the council property. That licence and then the ability of the restaurant to function there or the premise to function there, in my view, and I'm happy to come back to the committee if I'm incorrect, but in my view, then is considered as part of the licensed establishment overall.
Yeah. I'm just curious whether you've ever heard it suggested that local councils are being too broad in their use of these powers? For example, is it ever suggested that the declaration of a whole small regional town or community is inappropriate? I mean, is there places where, for example, perhaps councils should be allowing a bit of public drinking in certain areas, whereas in fact they're just using the mechanism to prohibit alcohol consumption in all public places?
Well, I can't say I've never heard it because I've paid attention to this inquiry, so now I've heard it. And certainly one of the premises of this inquiry is that footing. But it's not, it's not an issue that's been front of mind for our sector in terms of the challenges we've needed to face. We've been fighting battles on financial sustainability and housing and homelessness. We've been fighting battles on changing economies and sustainability, particularly in the rural and regional areas around renewable energy zones. This is an area where I think the regulatory regime has been fairly settled for a while, so it's not inappropriate to look at that, but I think it's one where councils have used their discretion and their engagement with local community groups and local law enforcement to implement these zones through consultative processes. So it's not one that's very frequently raised with us. And when we go through our annual conference and policies and motions come before us, it's not one that features in our top eight or ten issues for the sector, if I could put it that way.
Yeah, sure. There's been a concern raised in a number of the submissions that there's a flaw in the bill in the sense that it creates, if you like, a defence to the operation of other laws. So it basically says a person shan't be subject to a law in relation to their possession or consumption of alcohol or words to similar effect. And then I suppose it's up to the subject to interpret how that interacts with other laws. And examples have been given in some of the submissions, for example, that that could provide a defence to a criminal offence involving a juvenile who somehow supplied alcohol, because that's a law that relates to their consumption or possession of alcohol. So I'm just wondering whether the local government sector has any submission about that, about whether that's an appropriate way for us to interact with that regulatory framework? Or should, for example, we be thinking about amending all the individual acts if we're not happy with the framework in some respects?
Yeah, I think you picked on a neat point. Councils love simplicity and a good regulatory system and a good policy framework should give simplicity to those who are supposed to enforce it. And so I note provisions in the draft bill about the prevailing, to the extent of any inconsistency and the issues you've touched on around how some of those offences might be formed or made out. And I think what we would be looking at there is exactly as you've touched on, places of uncertainty that the drafting might create. And so in a frontline sense, what we wouldn't like to see, whether it's this bill or any other bill go through, is the ability for council officers to be subjected to difficult decision-making in an enforcement circumstance or for police officers to do the same thing. But ultimately, we wouldn't like to see any public harm come about because of that confusion either. So the example you've used of supply of alcohol to minors, you know, we would think that that's not a good policy outcome from a change such as might be proposed in this particular bill. So in a statutory drafting sense, it could go about, I suspect it's amending work in different ways. But I think any confusion in a public policy sense is not helpful for councils and our operations.
Thanks, Mr Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence, and thank you very much, Mr Reynolds. The time for questions has now passed. We very much appreciate the submission from local government New South Wales and you taking the time to appear before the hearing today. I think there was a question or two taken on.
Well, can I, they're quite important, Chair. The first one was what percentage of public space in New South Wales is banned from alcohol entirely? And secondly, how many zones where alcohol was permitted has it been reversed because of antisocial outcomes?
Thank you, Mr Ruddock. The secretariat, I'm sure, noted those questions and will be in contact with local government New South Wales in due course for a response. Once again, thank you for your submission and thank you for your attendance today.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thanks to the committee for the chance.
Thanks, Mr Reynolds.
Thank you. Mr Dukas, he's appearing in. Yes, Mr Dukas, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for your attendance.
My pleasure.
Representing the Ethnic Communities Council of New South Wales. Before we commence, could I ask you, Mr Dukas, to please state your name and position title and then either swear the oath or affirmation?
Peter Dukas, Chair Ethnic Communities Council of New South Wales.
And the oath or affirmation?
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you, Mr Dukas. Do you have an opening, I know you haven't made a submission, do you have an opening statement that you would like to make?
Thank you, Chair, thanks, members. The, so the Ethnic Communities Council is the largest and oldest multicultural organisation and peak body representing multicultural communities in this state. We were there at the foundation of Australian multiculturalism in nineteen seventy-four and seventy-five. Our founders were colleagues of Whitlam and Fraser during the time. And in that time, in the last fifty years that we've been in operation, we've been central to some of the big policy debates around Australian society and Australian culture. And I welcome this inquiry, notably in that it mirrors up, it puts two competing forces within our own member base, not necessarily at loggerheads, but at very, within very relevant points. We have communities that are very sensitive to this, to the determination of this committee and the underlying legislation for religious reasons. And we have communities who have a very different view, given that their image of Australia is one that has been fostered by a less regulated environment around consumption of alcohol. So, and of course, each of those communities have their own sort of subgroups within age brackets and socio-economic brackets and geographical outcomes. So for us, this inquiry and, or this committee process and the resulting legislation is of particular concern and particular interest moreover. So as far as an opening statement goes, I hope that's enough context before I expose myself to the committee.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I will turn to questions from the opposition, Mr Rath.
Do you think, I mean, I found it almost impossible in some council areas to find information online about which areas are alcohol-free in English. Do you think that enough is being done in terms of, you know, providing information to multicultural communities with, you know, that awareness that might be required in, you know, in other languages about where they could have a picnic, for instance, with alcohol in areas where they can't? Has that ever come to your attention about it might be, you know, unclear?
You're absolutely right, member. It's difficult enough in English and having messaging in language is something that we've been campaigning for for many years. I think Australia is sort of, since the lockdowns, we're kind of learning, we're kind of learning how to do it again in a way, we're kind of learning how to do public places in a different way and particularly about how alcohol can be consumed. Sometimes it's, it has religious reasons, the consumption of alcohol has a religious purpose. I know there's church groups that celebrate, they have religious celebrations outside in public places that are very sensitive to this as well. So yes, there's a lot more that can be done. I don't necessarily think it's a local government only problem. I think often messaging is something that is, that's where government and the private sector and the community sector all have roles to play. So I think it's a much more complex answer than simply pointing the finger at local government.
And have you noticed any, do you have any examples or sort of anecdotal evidence of some of these communities, obviously they want to have, you know, festivals, street parties, you know, any, has it been difficult at times to register those with councils or with the state government because they might, you know, run against alcohol, you know, free zones or that they haven't found it easy to get approval for their, you know, cultural events that may involve alcohol? Do you have any evidence of that?
Well, we're blessed in Australia that multiculturalism is kind of mainstream now. So there's different, there's different scale that is relevant to this. So the larger cultural festivals don't have that problem because they're so big, they have their own event organisers and they have, and their own infrastructure and they get all the rest, the relevant permissions and there's, then they have enough financial backing for it to be not as, not a noticeable issue. Where we've had members engage with us is particularly new communities that are sort of creating, that are creating that, that community infrastructure from scratch now, simply not understanding and they're coming to us on a good faith basis and their, you know, their concerns are that they just don't understand, they don't know where they can do certain things and where they can't. Another similar issue was the use of charcoal, like open fire charcoal in barbecues in parks in sort of the, you know, western suburbs of Sydney, where that's acceptable and where it's not. I know that some local government areas have got bins, special bins for the dumping of flammable materials for that reason. So I think in the same vein, this is, I would like to see that the application of the legislation that's being determined here has very practical outcomes in language, signage in language that explains what can and what can't be done.
Thank you. Mr Ruddock.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for coming along, Mr Dukas, representing the Ethnic Communities Council. So about a century ago, America had a constitutional amendment to ban alcohol. And of the forty-eight states that were then in the US, forty-six voted in favour of it. And the two that didn't had a large number of Southern European and Central European migrants, Italians and Greeks. I'm guessing, now I know you represent a lot of different groups, but I'm guessing that the European groups that you represent would generally be in favour of relaxing the consumption of alcohol in public. Would that be a fair assumption?
Yes, I'd say generally yes.
Okay. And what, I'm not entirely clear of what your view is of the bill generally speaking. You may not want to say you're entirely for it or entirely against, but are you generally in favour of liberalising the consumption of alcohol in public places?
I think on, from a personal perspective, yes, careful, with careful application, I'd say, and mindful that I'm, that I consider myself frontline, some of the reasons, some of the arguments against it, I think that it's, it is, it is something that needs to be considered and is something that broadly I'm in favour of.
Terrific. And now, I would guess that your group would represent some Islamic groups?
Yep.
Who don't drink alcohol, generally speaking. Now, so while they don't drink alcohol, have they expressed to you, I mean, I'm guessing that they would be neutral on this subject, they don't want to drink it, but they don't want to impose rules on other people? Or have they said to you, have the Islamic groups actively said to you, no, 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 we do not want alcohol consumed in public?
I have had that said to me, yes. But to be honest, the, our perspective is that the biggest opposition is established more conservative non-Islamic communities that don't want alcohol-related hooliganism in public places. So they're the, they're the concerns because they've had experience of alcohol-fuelled hooliganism and behaviours in the past. Islamic communities have got a general prohibition to it and they have a general reluctance of it because they believe that it's, that it's something that is, that shouldn't, that their community shouldn't be exposed to in the public. But that is a general position that we take generally. Whereas communities of those, of that Southern Europe, from the Southern European communities, for example, I would hazard, I would hazard that they are just as opposed, if not more so, than the communities that you would expect, simply because those community groups have their own community spaces that they own or control, they have their own community areas that they know they can go to. So they, so broadly, and I say this to someone that's in favour of the amendments, broadly, the greatest concern, and I think the challenge that members of this community have is to wrestle with this fear of alcohol-related hooliganism and how that can, and how the, the, not necessarily deregulation, but the watering down of the existing legislative structures can take that into account.
And my last question is, besides Islamic groups, are there any other ethnic communities which are concerned about this legislation that you've heard from?
There are, so not that I've heard from, but I am aware that there are some Christian groups that are opposed to it as well.
But I would really put them more in the category of a religious group rather than an ethnic group.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, we represent religious groups as well as ethnic groups.
That's it. Okay, thank you.
Mr Ruddock, no questions for me, Mr Borzac?
No. Uh, thanks, Chair.
Mr Lawrence.
Yeah, just on that question of Islamic communities and their views on this perhaps. So when I've lived in various parts of the Muslim world, I've become aware, I suppose, of a tradition or a custom where in many places you can get alcohol, but often it's fairly discreet. And for example, you might even in quasi-public places have it sometimes served in a non-transparent drinking device, so no one can see what's in it. And I'm just wondering, does that reflect not so much a desired prohibition completely on the consumption of alcohol, but some sort of cultural desire for it to be done in a discreet way, a way that's not necessarily visible?
Well, remember, I'm, I think it's dangerous to generalise the entire Muslim community.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
And there are, there are a significant, you know, and in saying that, it's more cultural than it is religious. There are, and when it is religious, it's, the culture informs why the different groups have that strict religious approach to it. So it is, in my view, even though the points that inform the community response are religious, it's done in a cultural manner. And that's informed whether it's, you know, Southern Mediterranean or Eastern Mediterranean Muslim groups versus South Asian Muslim groups or Southeast Asian Muslim communities of different kinds. It reflects, it reflects the position of the home country, it reflects how that community has established here and what its culture and religious makeup is here. So I think it is cultural, I think it is also, if I was, if I was able to generalise, I'd say the length of time that community has been established in Australia has the most impact on their position on matters like this.
So do you think there might be particular views or sensitivities in some parts of those communities if there was effectively a right to drink alcohol in all public places?
I think so. I think so. I think the concern, it goes back to. I think so. I think so. I think the concern, it goes back to what I said earlier about the extremes of that behaviour. And it's ultimately a, and we can see that different, and different local areas, I won't say local government areas, I'd say just local areas, approach this matter differently. So for example, the eastern suburbs beaches are very strict on it. And they're very strict on it because of behaviour that was bad for Brand Australia for a while. Whereas a park in, you know, a park in my local area in Ashfield, for example, is, there are signs there, but just like there are signs about the consumption of alcohol, there's also signs about open fires. And I can say that neither of those two things are followed, nor are they enforced, and nor are there any real problems from them. So I think that it is, it is cultural, but it is also about where in Sydney, I think we have to be mindful of cultural sensitivities within the Sydney Basin and how and how there are different areas that are, that have a different predominant culture. And I think that's, and I think that's also very relevant. So, you know, there are certain, there are certain public places where I would advise, where I would say that even if there was a, that even if there was a loosening of the laws, local government areas would step in, LGAs would step in and tighten things up in local parks. So I think, I think that this is one of the areas where local councils do have a lot more data from communities and from community use of public places. And they can put that to good effect if they were given the tools to do so, which is obviously a challenge for you and your committee.
Thank you, Mr Dukas. I wondered if I could follow up on a question that Mr Ruddick asked. I think he asked about the views of your different members. I wondered prior to coming here today, have any of your members ever raised this as an issue, either for or against?
I've been, I've been on my board for too long and I've been the chair for a long time. So I remember the Cronulla riots. And so to, to, to Member Roach's point before, the, this is an issue that has not gone away for many, many years. It's an issue that was affected greatly by COVID. And in that, despite the COVID lockdowns, I would suggest that there was a lot more public drinking during the COVID time than not because people were allowed to go to parks and they were not allowed to go to bars, for argument's sake. So I think this is a matter for, this has been a matter that's a very, that has a lot of significance to our members more broadly, but also as those members, as those member organisations evolve. And as they're, as they're integrated at different levels of Australian society, those concerns also evolve. So they're not just religious concerns, for example. They're concerns about what I said earlier, about hooliganism or about behaviour versus exposure. So I think that's a, it's something that's always going to be present. And it's something that is, that we get the concerns from surprising places. And that's why, you know, in preparing for today, for example, I assumed that our biggest, that the most complaints that we would get would be from the communities that you would expect, but it's not the case. I'd say that if we had, that if there were, if there was a single largest group that would have a problem, it would be the sporting associations of elderly people. So for example, the Italian groups that play bocce in public parks or old or other groups that use those public spaces constantly within a regiment. And they've been bothered by behaviour before. So I think that's where, that's where that, I think that's where this issue is going to be fought, at least the way that I'm going to be engaged on it after the the second, after the legislation comes into effect.
Oh, that's optimistic.
So there was some evidence earlier about a likely or possible increase in antisocial behaviour in public places if this sort of law was put into place. And I'm just wondering whether there's any particular sensitivities or issues that we should be aware of from the point of view of ethnic communities? Is there, for example, communities out there that might be more risk averse or perhaps be more concerned about that sort of thing, or more concerned about seeing public drunkenness in public places, who might then not want to use them? Is there any particular issues we should be aware of in that regard?
Well, from what I understand, antisocial behaviour is not going to get a free kick from this legislation. So I don't think that this, that what's contemplated here will affect antisocial, will affect those most extreme examples of antisocial behaviour. That's going to happen anyways. I think community concern stems from the use of public, the ability of communities to have confidence in public places, to not be a, to not be another source of trouble or another source of, of, of risk. I don't necessarily think it's about exposure as much as, as much as it may perhaps used to, may have been in the past. It's not, I don't believe that the biggest issue that face our members have to do with exposure to drinking because by the same token, they can't, the mere exposure to the cooking of certain foods may be just as offensive to those groups. So I don't necessarily consider it as black and white, as simply this alcohol be consumed in that next group in a park and that should be the problem. I believe it's all, it all comes down to the behaviour and the policing of the behaviour. And also the sensible exercise of discretion about where it's allowed and where it's not. Because I think there's, it's, it's easy to get it wrong and I think that's the question. I suspect, if we were to do a complete census of our members, that the biggest concern that they would have is proximity to children and proximity of spaces where this is allowed versus child play areas, for example. I suspect that, and I consider that that would be something that sensitivity would exist in all cultural groups.
So it's your view that there shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all approach? That somebody, whether it's local or state government, should maintain the power to determine whether alcohol consumption in a particular public place is allowed or not allowed?
Indeed. And also within a place, within each park or public place, where it is allowed and where it's not, for argument's sake. Because I think that, and I think that a broad brush approach to that is dangerous. Because it is, you know, the parklands of Sydney, if we focus only on Sydney, are very diverse, as are our people. And someone's expectation, for example, in Centennial Park, the kind of, the the demographics of a usual Sunday in Centennial Park versus Bicentennial Park is fundamental difference. And I think that we need to be sensitive to that and also be sensitive to the, and also be conscious of the relevance, the respective sizes of our, of our big, of our big community spaces. And I would expect that that could be used in a way that's sensitive to those community concerns, while also being sensitive, while also being open to the loosening of this, of the previous laws.
So does your organisation, or your members perhaps, have a position that the law should be as clear and understandable as is possible in order to ensure that all citizens can understand it as best they can?
I haven't, I haven't delved into the dangerous game of trying to take the ICC to have a position into this because it's a really sensitive issue. And it's sensitive, but broadly speaking, there's, the, our board would be, broadly speaking, our board is open to the loosening of the of the previous legislation and
So I should be clear, I wasn't talking about your position on the merits of this bill. I was more talking about the general proposition that law or legislation should be as clear and understandable as is possible in order that all citizens, as best as they can, can understand it? Is that a general view that you have?
Oh, absolutely. But we've actually been very successful in doing, in having our own programmes and projects for effective translation services, even through the AEC and the New South Wales Electoral Commission for explaining our electoral process. Our challenge is that any messaging of the government has to be translated into the multiple languages and then sub-dialects of our, of our member communities. And we get engaged on a, to do that by government all the time. So we start, our members start by the position that it's always confusing when it's in English. And then we add, and then we start adding layers of confusion to that on top.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
That's sort of what we do too. Thank you very much. I don't think there's any more questions. Just to be clear though, I wouldn't want you to leave here under the impression that this particular bill is going to be the law of the land. What we're in quite, it's a private members' bill that's been moved by the Libertarian Party. And we are considering as a committee, that bill and amongst other matters, in terms of the terms of reference. And in due course, the government will respond and there will be a vote of, by the parliament, the Legislative Council and maybe the Legislative Assembly on it. So it's a, it's a live bill that we're considering, but there's quite a journey to go before any actual legislative changes are enacted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Dukas, for you taking the time to appear before us today. We very much appreciate your excellent evidence and the work that you and your organisation do in the community. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Robertson, Mr Palace, if you'd like to come forward, we will get on with proceedings. Thank you, Mr Palace and Mr Roberts, for appearing today. Before we move to opening statements from the council, we just need to get you to state your name and position title and swear either the oath or affirmation. And we'll start with Mr Palace.
Thank you, Chair. Josh Palace, past President, New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Excellent.
Mr Timothy Roberts, Secretary of the New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much for appearing. Thank you very much for the submission. Would one of you or both of you like to make an opening statement?
I will, Chair.
Please proceed, Mr Roberts.
The New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties is one of Australia's leading human rights and civil liberties organisations founded in 1963. We are a non-political, non-religious and non-sectarian organisation that champions the rights of all to express their views and beliefs without suppression. We also listen to individual complaints and volunteer efforts attempt to help members of the public with civil liberty problems. The council has long held that restrictions on consumption of alcohol in public places directly links to the criminalisation, sorry, let me just say that again, consumption of alcohol in public places directly links the criminalisation and overpolicing of vulnerable people in our communities and does little or nothing to support those groups and in many instances causes harm. The growing list of alcohol-free zones in Sydney and other local government areas has been a creeping imposition on the freedom of the community to use public spaces without any evidence that it achieves other positive public policy objectives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn the question to the Opposition. Mr Roberts?
Thank you both for coming today and for your evidence. I suppose it's a question of balance between, on one hand, you could completely ban drinking in public places everywhere. And at the other end, you could not ban it anywhere. There's probably been an increase in the number of alcohol-free zones over time, but and this is probably almost more of a philosophical point, but it's also in terms of practicalities as well. Where should that line be drawn or what is the balance between, you know, how many alcohol-free zones we should have? Any thoughts on that?
I think with all aspects of civil liberties and competing rights, questions of balance arise. The position of the New South Wales Council for Civil Liberties is the balance has been struck too conservatively in this instance. That is to say, the scope of alcohol-free zones in local government areas now is too large. We would suggest it'd be reprimanded. If there is a conversation about where that balance is, we're happy to have it. But for the purposes of this committee, that we believe that its imposition is too much.
Thanks. Yeah, we've seen examples of like, you know, street parties being knocked back by councils, for instance, permits in some cases being needed for picnics above five or 10 people. I think that was a Victorian example that I saw, but obviously it is a matter of balance. Is there any way you think that we could, from a state legislative perspective, help get that balance right, whether it's things like, you know, requiring that councils do more to consult with the local police about hotspots, or whether it's the state government being able to override councils in some way? More reviews that need to be done of existing alcohol-free zones? Anything like that that you think could, could help get the balance right?
Look, it's a broadish question. I guess the first one, though, we would ask is what the purpose of the legislation would be, what the purpose of the restrictions or the balance you were trying to strike? There are already laws in place that allow police to move people along if necessary or to detain them with respect to their intoxication and to take them into care. So if that's already there, then what's, why require them? And I guess in those individual instances, we would have a look at it then.
And I suppose just to add to that, I think one of the things that really animates CCL's perspective on this is, as Tim intimated, what is the purpose behind this? What is the purpose behind alcohol-free zones? Is a harm minimisation approach to dealing with abuse of alcohol? A better way of dealing with the problem or the mischief that alcohol-free zones are trying to deal with? Or are alcohol-free zones simply just there to fund police and tone police people within society? Or police certain groups who use public space? I think that's something that is not super clear to us as the CCL at the moment. You know, what the position is generally into access to public space and use of public space. And once we know what the purpose behind these sorts of things are, then we can think about where the balance lies and how to best address sort of social harms and things like that. But I know that some of the other submissions canvass, you know, there being appropriate places where there are alcohol-free zones, like children's playgrounds and swimming pools and things like that. They seem to be quite appropriate in the circumstances.
Yeah, I completely understand that. I think there probably also needs to be, and be interesting your views, and you know, the Chair mentioned it previously, a clearer register of where, where these alcohol-free zones are. As an example, and I've used this story of Mr Ruddick a few weeks ago, that a couple of years ago, I remember having a picnic at a park and not knowing whether it was an alcohol-free zone or not. There was no signage that says it was, there was no signage that said it wasn't. I suppose the difficult thing, just from a, you know, when you think about it is that you probably shouldn't have to have signage to say that you can drink alcohol. It should only be if you can't. But being a little bit paranoid, I was thinking, are you allowed to drink here or not? And then going on to the City of Sydney website, it was a bit hard to figure out whether you could or not. Yeah, so any thoughts on maybe the, improving the clarity? Um, or maybe a, a, a register, not just on one council, but maybe a statewide register as well? Where you could just easily look up, um, online which areas are alcohol-free and which ones aren't? Because I have to say, it is quite confusing.
No, I would certainly agree. I guess our position would be generally that, um, uh, any way to make the laws that have been imposed more transparent, uh, would be, would be welcome. Um, but yes, uh, I think it certainly should be the case that if you are going to have such a zone that you shouldn't have an lesser adequate signage. We would certainly agree with that position as well. But again, generally, what, what's the purpose of restricting you having a, a picnic? Um, with a friend, drinking alcohol responsibly? Uh, what, what's the societal problem there? What's the purpose of preventing that from happen, happening? And our position, it shouldn't be.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Mister Ruddock, thank you Chair. Uh, well, thank you, uh, Mister Palace and Mister Roberts for your highly intelligent evidence-based submission. Uh, now, the City of Sydney is sort of, uh, out the front on this issue. Out of all the, there's a, I think there's a hundred and twenty-eight councils in New South Wales, but the City of Sydney is taking the lead sort of ahead of us, which we're happy to see. And I know that you've been keeping a close eye on that. And the Urbis Group, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, has recently, uh, uh, completed a report, which you're saying is online. And it found that the evidence for the effectiveness of alcohol-free zones to reduce alcohol-related harm are poor or non-existent. And that the police powers are often used to harass particular groups. So I'd be grateful if you could tell the committee, uh, when this process began with the City of Sydney, where it's up to and what do you think is likely? That what the City of Sydney Council, uh, which in many ways is the sort of the leading council in New South Wales, what, what do you think they're likely to do?
Um, well, look, obviously we're not able to speak for the City of Sydney itself. Uh, we understand that they're restricting, uh. Or they're not necessarily growing the amount of alcohol-free zones. But what our hope would be that they would, uh, review them and reduce them, certainly, especially in the light of a compelling report like that of Urbis.
But so this, I'm, I'm particularly interested in you're saying that, uh, the report, which is a well researched report, says that actually there's no upside. But it is being used by, uh, often the police are harassing particular groups. Can you elaborate on that first?
Yeah, I mean fundamentally, uh, the police enforce those penalty notices and those restrictions. And so there's just a, a practicality that for police to enforce them brings them into contact with, um, uh, with obviously members of the society. And who may be breaching that penalty. It's often people in vulnerable positions, um, maybe Aboriginal or Indigenous people, young people, homeless people. Who are using these alcohol-free zones and are brought into contact with police because they may be consuming alcohol in a prohibited way. The danger is because the powers to confiscate, um, and dispose of alcohol, it creates quite a, a conflict, an adversarial interaction. Uh, the police will confiscate an item, uh, of alcohol and dispose of it on the spot. And obviously that's an impingement on someone's liberties and they may become particularly offended by that and then escalate to a, a who knows what. But in commonly, uh, in, in, in some circles, this might be the, you know, prefer use of language, assaulting police, resisting arrest, the trifecta. I think the legal aid referred to it in their, uh, in their submission. And that would be, um, the concern. There's an interaction that because of the lack of harm that this particular vulnerable person was having on society. We would question whether that was necessary whatsoever. The damaging impacts of the criminalisation of that interaction, you know, progressing to arrest and beyond, uh, a lifelong and, uh, punitive.
Now, as the, as the Chair indicated to the previous, uh, witness, the, um, you know, this, this bill has a long way to go before it could actually become legislative. We're hoping it gets there, I certainly am. But it's some time away. But let's say that, that it did pass and it did become the law of the land. Now, obviously the Council of Civil Liberties does not want to see there being an outbreak of, uh, antisocial behaviour. Uh, so if it did become the law of the land, is there, are there any measures that the Council of Civil Liberties could think of? That would go to reducing that being a, a problem if, if this law is passed?
Well, we would submit in that particular example that there are already laws in, in place to do that. And particularly with respect to LEPRA, the law enforcement, uh, powers. Uh, police can, if there are problematic behaviours, move people along. And if someone is intoxicated and endangering themselves, can take them into care. We would question really whether or not, um, that alcohol-free zone has played a part in that at all, because that law already exists.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I was particularly interested in the Urbis report. Uh, one of the things that was floated in that was the, uh, they don't actually recommend it, but it was floated in the body of the report. The idea of designated wet areas. So a white list where areas. Because some people, like lower socio-economic groups can't afford to drink in a park, may not want to drink, you know, indoors in public housing. So what's your view on that proposal, that there be designated areas for outdoor drinking? Where because of their designation, they're more likely to be able to be policed, these types of things? Did you have a view on that?
Um, I would be, uh, yeah, my, my first sort of reaction to that would be to question its necessity in circumstances where, like I've just said. If there is, what's the purpose of, what's the concern at play? If it's problematic behaviour, that's the concern for the society around it, then that can be dealt with by the powers that already exist. So I guess I'm a bit ambivalent to the position, the question about wet areas. Because in our view, uh, the, the, I guess the liberty question is, well, why? What, what's the, what's wrong with people being able to enjoy a responsible drinking in, in, in public places like parks, et cetera?
Okay. They also talk about the need for further research, that there just isn't the body of evidence that links APAs and AFVs with. Uh, sorry, AFZs with, you know, good public health outcomes. Do you think that's an area that the state government should get more involved in in terms of, um, actually assessing whether or not they're delivering what they're intended to do?
I mean, absolutely. Because I think the primary concern for us, and I'll let Josh speak to this if he wants to add anything, but would be the, um, uh, the, the health, the health response. The currently, the state of play is that alcohol-free zones potentially move, uh, problematic drinking, problematic use of alcohol, um, to domestic situations. And that also has the consequence of removing them from line of sight of people and organisations who are able to support those individuals. So, uh, yeah, fundamentally, a state-based approach to some research would be, would be welcome.
And I suppose just to add to that, we do try to take evidence-based approaches. And something in thinking through this issue was that there is actually a lack of evidence around the efficacy of alcohol-free zones. And I suppose I would add to that, that there is generally a lack of research on public order policing and police interactions. With people at the coalface, which may not necessarily result in charges. Um, so, so not just is there a need for additional research on the efficacy of alcohol-free zones? But also the way that they're being policed and what police interactions around that look like. Because obviously our, our, our concern is, you know, there's a freedom issue, a, a, a issue of civil liberty around alcohol-free zones. But then there's also an issue around the way that alcohol-free zones are policed. And, and, and that's probably more a policing issue generally, you know, we're concerned around the way that police, police public space. And police vulnerable communities. And do those two aspects both require more research to inform policymaking from August institutions like the New South Wales Parliament?
Yeah, in your submission, you note that, um, the indications are that in, in regional areas. In terms of police confiscating, tipping out, destroying, disposing of alcohol, they're not recording those inter- interactions at all. Or that they, they're poorly recorded.
Hmm, hmm, yeah.
That's the case?
Yeah.
And that's something that should, we should address, because they, they may well be significant interactions and for those vulnerable communities.
I mean, I'd go as far as saying that, um, all police interactions should be better documented when police are interacting with members of the public. So that there's better data on the way that police, uh, interact with people when policing public space. I think that would be useful on, on a whole range of issues, um, not, not just this issue. Appreciate that that may be an impost on police time, but it would certainly inform policy, policymaking and harm minimisation generally.
Thank you Mister Palace. Mister Lawrence?
Yeah, thanks Chair. There was some evidence earlier from, uh, the Alcohol and Drug Foundation. That if we were to have a complete restriction really of drinking alcohol in public places. That it would normalise the consumption of alcohol and lead to an increase in drinking. Uh, is that a reasonable sort of proposition, do you think?
I, I mean, I don't think so generally. Uh, so, so just to clarify the position, is this the, that, uh, by reducing. By banning it from all public spaces, is that what you're saying? Sorry?
No, no, by allowing it in all public places.
Sorry.
That, um, it would become normalised and then you would have an overall increase in use or consumption?
Look, um, they may have particular research that they're, uh, basing that on. I would just question that from a practical perspective. I mean, surely the normalisation of the alcohol use is happening in homes, uh, and with respect to what, uh, children or young people or other people are seeing. With their peers consume alcohol. Um, and again, that would speak to our overarching position that, um, that there should be a health response, um, to this sort of stuff. Um, uh, harm minimisation, should I say. And harm minimisation includes a health response, but also I think an educative, uh, one with respect to alcohol use.
Yep.
Um, perhaps that's, uh, in, in schools with, um, with PE programmes or whatever. I can't speak to that specifically. But again, um, we would certainly question, I, I think a concerning precedent with respect to using, uh, public policy and law. Uh, and with respect to the use of a substance to try and, um, normalise behaviour or change, you know, I think that's a dangerous space to get into.
Um, it's often said in the criminal law or in discussions related to criminal law policy. That there's too much reliance on this assumption that the reactive tools of the criminal law can actually bring down offending. And you've made the point, I think it was you that made the point, that, uh, that under this bill, the police would retain their powers to deal. Uh, with drunken and disorderly type conduct, move on directions and so forth. Uh, but I'm wondering, is that really the answer? In the sense that, uh, the reactive tools of policing are unlikely to reduce that sort of antisocial conduct? And might it not be the case that the more proactive powers that are actually provided under these local government source powers? Might actually be more efficacious in terms of, uh, reducing antisocial behaviour, uh, such as drunken and disorderly? So the power to pour out alcohol and so forth, where the person's arrested or charged, uh, but the alcohol's poured away. And then they can't, uh, consume the alcohol in the public place?
I, I think, again, if our focus was on being proactive and having, uh, a proactive approach, then we would be addressing this, uh, with educated programmes. And, and harm minimisations, uh, as opposed to interactions with police at all, yes. And certainly those reactions would not be, um, uh, you know, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be the last port of call. But i- if, if that's our focus, then I say, yeah, harm minimisation strategy should be the focus.
Perhaps to put it slightly more bluntly, um, at the point at which police are involved. Um, is a point where state intervention is too late if you're attempting to take a harm minimisation approach. Like, I, I'd be very surprised if there's clear and cogent evidence that says police tipping out someone's alcohol excessively. Over a couple of weeks is going to resolve an issue of alcohol abuse. Um, harm minimisation approach would kick in far earlier than this and try to avoid that interaction with the police officer in the first place.
Yeah. So accepting that there's higher rates of problematic drinking in certain communities, higher rates of social problems and disadvantage in certain communities. I'm curious on your thoughts on how this bill would play out if passed? So for example, what would it represent in terms of changed conditions on the Main Street of Dubbo? For example, as compared to Mossman? Like, what are we actually realistically looking at here? In terms of public drunkenness, antisocial conduct, et cetera, et cetera?
Um, I mean, yeah, it's, uh, an exercise potentially in stereotypes, but you're right, those scenarios, uh, for the, the, the rules would be very different. The key point would be in a community like Dubbo who might have a greater population of vulnerable members. That there isn't, uh, an interact, an unnecessary interaction with police, that we've balanced that better. So that those people aren't engaging in policing and potentially a matter escalating into a criminal one. That in itself is also a costly exercise for the state in terms of having to deal with that situation and potentially incarcerate. Or, or, or make, uh, a criminal justice process through that as well.
Yeah, I'm talking, I mean, it's important to be concerned about those communities. Um, I agree with that. But I'm talking more about from the point of view of the citizen who wants to enjoy public space. And maybe doesn't much like being around drunk people and doesn't much like being subjected to antisocial behaviour. How is this going to play out differently on the Main Street of Dubbo as compared to Mossman?
Hmm. I mean, the, the police, if, if the bill in its current form passes, and I know that certain others submit to say. That there are perhaps alternative ways of, you know, going about doing this and all of those sorts of things. Um, the police retain certain powers to deal with people who are being disorderly.
Yes, except isn't that just relying on the reactive tools of the criminal law?
Yes. And so I suppose in, like, this is where I, I, I sort of addressed Mister Rath's quest, question in a sort of, um, strange way earlier. But it's, what is the mischief that we're dealing with with alcohol-free zones? Is it policing of public space and tone policing and, and, and the way that people enjoy the use of public space? Or are we attempting to deal with an issue of substance abuse? If we're attempting to deal with an issue of substance abuse, we need to take a harm minimisation approach which kicks in well before policing. If it's about tone policing and, you know, clamping down on the use of public space, well, we say that fundamentally offends matters of civil liberty. Now, the bill is an imperfect way to deal with or implement. A whole of government response that is needed to deal with abuse of alcohol. We say as a matter of civil liberty, the bill is principled. And goes some way to protecting civil liberties more than the current situation. But will the bill resolve the harm caused by substance abuse? No.
Can I ask a follow-up then? So what I'm, what I'm hearing, I'm just trying to get this clear for me, is that you're supporting the principle of it. You know, in terms of civil liberties and allowing people that choice. But in reality, you're understanding that what happens in practice on the street is quite a different thing. That might actually consider another set of policy considerations. So it's not necessarily that by allowing this extra liberty. That we're improving the lived experience of people in those, in those circumstances. So you're taking a kind of hypothetical view of what is a better version?
Yeah, so I mean, I, you know, we would, um, we would say that the bill improves the liberty for people. You know, like Mister Rath who wants to have his picnic in the park and know, um, know quite clearly whether there is an alcohol-free zone or not. But is it going to improve the liberty of some people who are overpoliced? Probably not. Um, are there changes that need to be made to policing and public space generally? Probably. Um, as many of you know, we've spoken to you about this at committees and, and in other contexts before. Um, there does need to be a change in the way the public space is policed. But yes, the police are then left with reactive tools. The reactive tools are the lesser evil than the alcohol-free zones, we would say.
But then is, are alcohol-free zones even effective at all? Because you're in, I suppose you're, you're in the position then that people want to be disorderly and get drunk in the park. They're going to do it anyway, regardless of whether it's an alcohol-free zone or not. And then what's actually happening is that an alcohol-free zone is essentially just preventing good law-abiding citizens wanting to have a picnic. And having a glass of wine from participating in that. And it sort of goes back to my first question about the balance.
That is, that is, sorry, I've interrupted you. That, that is, that is the question. It is one of balance. Uh, and the, the law doesn't strike that. By preventing anyone from using the space of alcohol for any purpose, there is no balance. It's zero tolerance, obviously. Um, whether or not people disobey that law is obviously, uh, a different question. But at the moment, that isn't, uh, you, no, no one is allowed to. So then the question is, well, what are we, what, is it, is it that we've got disorderly people in a park, potentially a group gathering? Well, then that's, that's the, that's the ill, that's the mischief you're trying to create. And there are avenues which that can be already done now. Um, so yes.
So your concern seems to be, and this is pretty understandable, because you're the Civil Liberties Council, about the interaction between the citizen and the state. Uh, but I'm, I suppose, looking at it more through the prism of the citizen's interaction with other citizens. And we've had evidence earlier that if this law was introduced, there would be an increase in antisocial behaviour in public. So I suppose I'm interested, A, do you accept that's likely the case? And then I guess as a follow-on, should we be concerned more about harms that occur in public places? I mean, the criminal law makes it an aggravating factor if offending occurs in public. And that comes back to some notion of preserving public places for enjoyment of everyone. So I'm interested in your thoughts, I guess, on those two things.
Um, so, uh, on the first point. If, if the bill passes, it would be an interesting exercise for empirical scholars to, um, look at where the deterrents worked. Um, and, uh, my colleagues at Sydney Law School in Criminology would say that generally speaking. The data says the deterrents doesn't work, it doesn't actually prevent people from doing anything. Um, so I suppose I approach, I approach the view that. If the deterrent function of an alcohol-free zone is removed. Um, there will then be floodgates of offending with general scepticism, because we know in other areas of the law it doesn't work.
So just on that point, I mean, that normal view, uh, that deterrence, uh, is a fallacy.
Hmm.
I would think is often right in a general sense, but wouldn't you agree? Here, if you're talking about the main street, for example, of a small regional community. An alcohol zone that currently exists under this regulation isn't really. An exercise in deterrence by way of a norm, it's actually the provision of proactive powers. In a particular discreet area for the authorities to enforce the rule. So police can go and pour out alcohol, you, you can have that area patrolled. If large-scale drinking is occurring there, then council rangers can be involved as well. So do you think that that prism, um, of the fallacy of deterrence is really the right way to look at this?
I'm very conscious of, of me being an inner-city lawyer who doesn't live in regional areas, um. And I'm very conscious that you, Mr Lawrence, have, um, far greater knowledge of. Policing in, 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 and, and, and what it's like at the coalface in these sort of areas, um. I accept that from media reports that I've seen. Um, regional police and regional communities may see the operation of alcohol-free zones. To work in a different way, but like I live in the city of Waterloo, almost all of my suburb. Is an alcohol-free zone, the alcohol-free zone is certainly not doing anything to deter, um, disorderly. Drinking in public space. But I am certainly seeing a lot of negative police interactions with people who are not disorderly. In my own community, um, when I'm moving about the community, particularly in the evenings. Um, so there are community members who are drinking alcohol in public spaces, not being disorderly. And police are interacting with them, and police are sometimes tipping out their alcohol. And I look at it as a lawyer and think. Well, that's a bit weird, they're not doing anything wrong. Um, so. I accept that in different areas of the state, yes, there might be countervailing factors, but I suppose I still approach. The deterrence line with a bit of scepticism.
So just on a different point, there's, um, it's a feature of this bill that. Rather than amending all the different pieces of legislation that, uh, that regulate alcohol. It creates, if you like, a defence to any law that would impose a sanction. For the possession or consumption in public. There's been some criticism of that, I think, in the. Uh, maybe in the legal aid submission, but certainly in the New South Wales Government submission. Saying that, that it's confusing and from a regulatory point of view, it won't be clear for people. So from a civil liberties perspective, uh, do you have a view about whether that's a satisfactory? Way to amend the statute book, so to create a general defence to other laws. As opposed to, for example, making an individual decision about different statutes that should be amended?
Look, um, uh, we're dealing with a bill that's in front of us. Um, if we'd certainly be open to a recommendation, potentially or consider a recommendation to deal with those things individually if it was made.
Yeah.
But otherwise, yeah, uh, our comments were with respect to the, the bill as it stands at the moment.
And just to add to that, as a matter of course, I think it probably is better governance. To address the laws as they are on the statute books, to kind of clean up, um, the, the legislation across the board, but.
Yeah, so for example, it's been suggested that a person might get a defence to an offensive manner. Um, or language charge because that's offending conduct that relates to their consumption of alcohol. If you assume that it's an alcohol-driven offence. Would you agree that it's unsatisfactory really from a civil liberties point of view that, that it should be so opaque?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, uh, it should be clear. Um, so if that's part of the recommendation of this committee, we certainly would, uh, happy to review it, but otherwise, yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence, and thank you very much, uh, Mr Roberts and Mr Palace for. Uh, you taking the time to appear at the hearing today. We very much appreciate your excellent evidence and the submission. Uh, and for the work you generally do in the community, so we very much appreciate that. Um, I don't think there are any questions taken on notice, so once again, thank you very much and all the very best.
Thank you, Trev.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, it is now one thirty, we will break for lunch and reconvene at two thirty P M on the dot. Thank you.
Two thirty, we will recommence the Portfolio Committee Number One hearing into the Alcohol Consumption in Public Places Liberalisation Bill 2024. And so our next witness appearing via video conference is Donna Osling. Donna, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mr Chair.
We can hear Donovan, we can't see her, but we will just continue on regardless. So, thank you, Ms Osling. Before we get to your opening statement, could I ask you to please state your name and position title and swear either the oath or affirmation which you should have been sent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. My name is Donna Osling. I'm the Director of Planning and Sustainability at Narabri Shire Council. And I will take the affirmation, please, which is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms Osling. We afford inquiry witnesses the opportunity to make a brief introductory statement or remarks. So do you have an introductory statement you'd like to make?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr Chair. And I'd like to thank the Committee for providing the opportunity to provide evidence in respect of the Alcohol Consumption in Public Places Liberalisation Bill 2024. As detailed in Council's questionnaire response, Council is concerned in relation to the impacts of the bill in respect of community safety and is therefore not supportive of the bill. In addition to antisocial behaviour, there are additional concerns regarding potential unintended consequences of the bill, including, for example, the management of litter and waste, particularly glass. In the preparation of this submission in respect to this bill, Council has consulted with its Crime Prevention Advisory Committee, which comprises a range of community service organisations, council's elected representatives and New South Wales Police representatives. Council's recently adopted crime prevention plan 2024 to 2028 was as prepared by the UNE Centre for Rural Criminology, identifies that alcohol was involved in 28.6% of DV-related assaults recorded during 2019 to 2023. It is also worthwhile noting that Narabri Shire has a large transient worker cohort due to extensive mining operations within the Shire. As detailed in Council's questionnaire response, a lack of clarity exists in relation respective the relationship of the bill to the existing statutory framework. On this basis, council concerns with communicated position of LGNSW in its submission to the bill. As also detailed by LGNSW in their submission, Narabri Shire Council, in close consultation with our community, strives to achieve a balance between individual freedoms, social inclusion and community amenity, vibrancy and safety. The considered placement of outdoor alcohol restrictions is an important tool in this task. In conclusion, council does not support the bill, which seeks to impose a one-size-fits-all approach to community safety and public amenity. Thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback.
Thank you very much, Ms Osling, and thank you very much to Narabri Council for filling out the questionnaire and for your evidence today. We will now turn to questions. And the first set of questions will be from the opposition led by Ms Munro. Ms Munro.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for appearing today and for responding to the questionnaire. I'm curious about the ways that the Narabri Council has shifted its approach to alcohol and alcohol-free zones over time and whether you've had an increase in alcohol-free zones and how that's impacted social amenity, either positively or if there are negative effects to those increases over time.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the alcohol-free zones have increased moderately over time in response to identified community need. I think what sets Narabri Shire perhaps apart from other communities is that we do have a very robust relationship with the New South Wales Police Force as well as other agencies. Our Crime Prevention Advisory Committee is also well established with longer-term membership and clear terms of reference and charter of objectives. So the current framework, as it stands, has served this community well.
So what has been the effect of increasing the number of alcohol-free zones over time, over some time? I mean, are we talking about five years, 10 years?
Yep. From my perspective, it would be over a period of 10 years in respect to the Boxer statistics and trending with the offences. That would be a question for New South Wales Police. But anecdotally, the alcoholic offences are within acceptable parameters and thresholds.
Okay. And so who sets those parameters and thresholds?
That would be the responsibility of the New South Wales Police in consult with the New South Wales Government, I'd suggest.
Okay, so the council doesn't have its own thresholds or levels of comfort with, I mean, maybe comfort's the wrong word, but levels of permissibility, let's say, of certain types of crime or circumstances that are deemed a kind of appropriate level of risk, I suppose?
No, we don't have established KPIs in that regard.
Okay. And so how are you measuring? I mean, I agree obviously with the Boxer data. You've got police looking at that, but when the council is making policy, you must be looking at that information as well to determine whether policies are working or not to achieve the ends of reducing crime, for example, or reducing litter?
Yeah. Yeah, through the Chair again. We do, council has recently adopted a crime prevention plan. That's detailed in my opening statement. That provides the vehicle for council's efforts and considerations for the crime prevention piece in this particular area. And we are progressively implementing the actions identified in that plan, which heavily relies on Boxer statistics and strongly underpinned by community engagement.
Okay. And that's, I guess, when you're determining, you referred to community need earlier. Is that anecdotal or is that data-driven? How do you determine community need or perhaps it's driven by councillors?
Through the Chair, it's a combination of both. The community need has been driven by a robust framework of community engagement. It was a detailed community survey. The process involved also engagement with council's elected representatives prior to final adoption of the plan.
Okay. And with that survey, how many respondents are you getting? And were there clear, were there clear calls for particular policies to be enacted? Or how did that survey work? Was it kind of, I don't want to say push polling necessarily, but were you offering up different solutions for problems that you already saw? Or were you asking residents to identify problems that then needed to be addressed?
Yeah, it was a combination of both. It was a survey that was prepared by the UNE Centre for Rural Criminology. It was a statistically representative survey, which was authorised by their research team. The survey also identified a whole range of stakeholders to have input into that, to the plan preparation. So it was both quantitative and qualitative. So there was also, community perceptions of crime were also addressed as part of that body of work.
Okay. And is that survey or response or report public? Is that something that we can find?
The plan is forward-facing. However, the background research paper is internal. However, I'd be happy to make that available to the committee on a commercial, in confidence basis.
Thank you. That would be helpful. I guess, I'm not sure how much you can talk about it, but you referred to part of the research relating to community attitudes towards crime. Did, are you aware of whether those attitudes reflected very closely Boxer results around criminal patterns and activity and, I guess, the reality from a data perspective?
Yeah, it's certainly a complex question. And given the role of the media in community perceptions of crime, this is a relatively low, lower area of crime. But there's certainly a level of community concern around community safety and crime generally. But that's detailed in the report, as I said, I'm happy to provide to the committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms Munro. Mr Ruddick.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for joining us, Ms Osling. So across the Narabri Shire Council as of today, how many public parks or public places they say that the council is saying that people are allowed to consume alcohol?
Through the Chair, I'd have to take that on notice. I'm sorry, I don't have that information at hand at the moment.
Well, would I be sort of in the right direction if I guessed that it would be close to none?
I'd have to take that information, that request on notice, I'm sorry.
Okay. And would we say that, is the Narabri Shire Council experiencing, is there a pattern of antisocial behaviour related to alcohol and public drinking at the moment already?
That would be a question for the New South Wales Police Service. But I'd imagine that our challenges with alcohol consumption would be similar to other centres of our size and nature.
I mean, so what I'm trying to get at is that I suspect that there is, I'm guessing nowhere, that it is allowed, people are allowed to publicly drink, but people are doing it anyway and that there probably is occasionally some antisocial behaviour. But that is happening under the current laws already. So I'm just thinking that, yes, there are problems, social problems, but I don't think it's caused by, you know, I don't think it would be exacerbated by this bill being passed.
Yes, as I said, it'd be a question for New South Wales Police in terms of their responses to incidents locally.
My last question is, I'm guessing, you live in the city of Narabri?
I do.
So, and I'm guessing you've lived there for some time?
That's correct, yes.
But I mean, are the locals concerned about people drinking in public at the moment and being antisocial?
There would be a level of concern within the community around community safety generally, whether that extends to alcohol consumption, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr Raddick, Mr Borzac, any questions from you?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms Osling. Just a couple of questions from me. Are you able to give us a bit of a sense of the alcohol-free zones in Narabri? Are we talking about the whole of the CBD, for example?
Yes, that's correct. It would be the majority of the CBD area.
Yep. Are you able to give us a bit of an idea about what the council staff, so the Rangers and maybe some other council staff, I'm not sure, what sort of role they're playing in enforcing these zones? Are they actively, for example, patrolling them and pouring out alcohol, confiscating alcohol and the like?
No, through the Chair. Our compliance team essentially provide support to New South Wales Police as requested. They're not actively engaged in enforcement activities. As a lot of as a lot of rangers within rural and regional areas are not directly involved in that enforcement piece, but we'd certainly provide support as available under the provisions of the Local Government Act to New South Wales Police upon request.
So is it the case that they've got certain powers under the legislation to be involved, but on an operational level, it's in the hands of the police predominantly?
Yes, that's correct. That's a good summary.
Oh, okay, yeah. Just in terms of your crime prevention strategies and consultation, are you able to give us a sense about whether there's been community sentiment expressed in Narabri that public intoxication in parks and main streets and the like is concerning to the community in Narabri?
Yeah, I believe that there's been, that specific question was addressed in the survey that I referenced previously. As I said earlier, I'd be happy to make that report available for consideration of the committee on a commercial incompetence basis. And that forms part of the broader piece regarding community perceptions of crime and community safety generally.
Yeah. Am I right in thinking that the population of Narabri is probably quite elderly compared to the state population?
Yeah, that's correct. We've got an aging population, but also, as I indicated in my opening statement, we do have a large transient worker cohort. We have a temporary accommodation of temporary workers' village on the fringe of the community, certainly within walking distance of the CBD.
It's probably a hard question, but based on your knowledge of the enforcement activities going on and the Narabri population, do you think that if it was perfectly legal to drink alcohol in all public places, maybe except for a small selection of them, that you would see a lot more public drinking in the parks and main streets of Narabri?
Yeah, that would be my view, that it would encourage drinking activities in a wider range of locations. And that's also why our Crime Prevention Advisory Committee expressed concerns around impact on vulnerable members of the community, particularly children.
Yeah. Is there any respects in which the state regulation of alcohol could be improved from council's point of view, particularly in respect maybe of applications for licences for public events and festivals, things of that nature?
Through the Chair, the current system works reasonably well. In my view, we too have a strong level of support and engagement from the licensing authorities, New South Wales Police. There are good lines of communication. The system and the frameworks are known and they're able to be, requests are able to be dealt with quite seamlessly. So I don't have any immediate suggestions in terms of improvements to the current arrangements.
Yeah. Is there any particular parks or other public places in Narabri where public drinking occurs on a frequent basis that you're aware of?
Yeah, I'd have to, as I indicated previously, I'd have to take that on notice in terms of the number of parks and any specific areas of concern. And again, it'd probably be a question for the New South Wales Police.
Thank you, Ms Osling. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence, and thank you, Ms Osling. That concludes the questions. I think you've taken a question or two on notice and also a reference to a report that you may be able to provide us, the commercial incompetence. So the secretariat will be in contact with you in due course. But again, thank you very much for your evidence today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Mr Jennings and Dr Humphries, if you want to come forward, we'll just roll into the next round. Well, thank you very much to both of you for your attendance today, for the submission you've made. It's very much appreciated by the inquiry and the committee. Before we proceed, if we could begin with your name and position title and a swearing of either the oath or affirmation. If we could start with you, Dr Humphries?
I think that's on, mate.
It's already on? All right, great. Name is John Humphries. My position is Chief Economist at the Australian Taxpayers Alliance and, for better or worse, founder of the Libertarian Party. And you need this, all right?
We do now.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Mr Jennings?
My full name is Clifford William Jennings. I'm Senior Advisor to the Honourable John Ruddick, and I'll be providing an affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Would one or both of you like to make an opening statement before we go to questions?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Please proceed, Dr Humphries.
So I think I'm going to go a little bit different to the submission, as you've seen here. I think there are four issues to unpack, and I think when properly unwrapped, they all lend support to this proposed legislation. The first one is, has been touched on before. I think there is a study coming out of Victoria that shows something about 50% of people are unaware of the laws that are banning drinking in public places. So everything else we're about to talk about is probably lousy to get much more to the meat of the argument, but we have to put this through the lens of, to start with, this law is ineffective to a significant percentage of the population. Many don't know, many more don't care, and so they continue to act the same. If they continue to act the same, the law obviously isn't operating as intended or in any way. Having said that it's not operating, that doesn't mean this is like a net neutral situation. There are two significant costs that come from maintaining a law that isn't operating. One is that it criminalises behaviour of otherwise law-abiding and peaceful people. And this can be particularly a problem for some lower socio-economic people and groups who have fewer alternatives available, then they are just left with more and more run-ins with the police. People who are antisocial, well, that should be addressed, antisocial behaviour is illegal, but the ones who are otherwise would have been law-abiding and peaceful now have more and more interactions, unnecessary interactions with the police for a law that is significantly not operating. Secondly, to some degree, it makes a mockery of the law. If this many people are unaware and many of the ones who are aware don't care, there's a degree to which we're criminalising...
Order.
Criminalising the peaceful and making a mockery of the law. So that's the first point. Moving on to the second point, some people will change their behaviour, right? So I touched on many people don't, some people will. But I want to address one type of behavioural change first before we get to the issue of more or less drinking. And that is, there can be just a change in the nature of the drinking. So this is unpacked in a bunch of different ways. If people have less access to being able to have a social drink in a park or on a beach, one option is they get funnelled into a drinking and gambling factory, which exists for the sole purpose of making money out of getting people to drink and gamble more. Now, don't get me wrong, I love pubs, but the idea of if we have a certain behaviour we're worried about, we put all of those people in the one place together, with the primary goal of that place being to sell alcohol and gambling, it's an interesting way to address something that people are suggesting is a concern. So that's one behavioural shift. It doesn't decrease drinking, it just shifts it towards, I would argue, a place that's perhaps more encouraging of binge drinking. Another option is that people don't drink less. Instead of drinking in a park, they shift to drinking at home. Again, what evidence we have on that is that it also encourages more binge drinking. At home, you've got better access to alcohol, fewer people giving you the guidelines and the rails to negative feedback. And you're also, instead of being out in the sun and being social, you're copped in home, out of the sun, being antisocial. So that's a behavioural change. So the law would be, you know, quote-unquote, "working to change behaviour", but it's not a positive behavioural change. Another one is that some people will continue to drink in parks but take steps to decrease the chance of them getting caught. A beer in hand, very visible. Half a bottle of whisky tipped into a water bottle, not very visible. We are, by banning drinking in parks, incentivising people to actually participate in harder liquor and secretly consume harder liquor. Now, that's not the goal of the legislation, of course, but it is one of the incentives that comes from legislation of banning public drinking. And an addendum to that is, some people, instead of switching to harder liquor, will just switch to a pill or some other substance non-alcoholic. If you make it harder and harder to get access to a casual beer in a park, you are increasing to some degree the incentives to pop a pill before going to the park, because then when you're up the park, you're breaking no laws. But it's not necessarily something we want to be doing to incentivise people to take other actions. And this is, in other studies, not specifically about Australian drinking in parks, this sort of behavioural change comes up again and again. So this is a bunch of behavioural changes which clearly weren't the intent of the legislation, but they are behavioural changes that come nonetheless, not even less drinking, just a change in type of drinking to worse drinking. But point three, so that's the second point, point three, that is the crux of what people argue for these bans would be, point three, some people will change their behaviour by drinking less in parks, absolutely. That's the intended goal, and that will happen to some degree. I would argue, though, there is a good case to be made that that's still, even on that issue alone, even if you disregard all the others, is potentially still creating a net negative, because drinking has benefits and costs. No honest economist, I suffer from being an economist, apologies, no honest economist looks at any policy and does a cost-cost analysis. You do a benefit-cost analysis. Drinking gives benefits. Many people enjoy having a drink. Many tourists coming to an area enjoy being able to have a drink. And yes, there can be some antisocial behaviour, but keep this in mind. The people who are drinking less are, by definition, the people who know of the law, care about the law, are not switching to other places to drink, are not smuggling drinks into the park, are not doing anything to avoid the law. The exact people obeying this law and foregoing a drink are exactly the very most responsible people we have in our community. So it's not obvious to me at all that, on balance of probability, even those people foregoing a drink, that we are getting a benefit from that, or allowing them to drink, we would have a cost from that. And the final point goes to a longer-term point. This is a cultural issue of the way we address alcohol in this country. And this is a very well-worn issue. The sociologists and anthropologists do this much better than I, but they've unpacked the different drinking cultures, especially what's called the Mediterranean versus the more Anglo-drinking cultures. And the Mediterranean drinking cultures have this idea of a social drink, where it's normalised, it's standard, you have a glass of wine with lunch and you just move on with your day. It's all very visible, it's a social drinking, but what that does is it encourages a normalisation of drinking as a moderate, responsible, almost, dare I say, boring activity, as opposed to the alternative drinking culture, the Anglo-drinking culture, where this is more about, instead of it's social drinking, it's more hidden drinking. We're a bit embarrassed of it, so we hide it and we put it in its place. And this hidden drinking attitude fosters a normalisation of drinking as being a forbidden fruit, exciting, something that, oh, you can't do in polite society, but yes, quickly, the shades are drawn, we can rush over there and binge drink. And you'd be unsurprised that cultures that gravitate towards the Anglo approach tend to have more binge drinking as a percentage of drinkers than people who gravitate towards the Mediterranean approach. So I don't want to overstate this. This is a long-term cultural shift. You don't get long-term cultural shifts in a year or two. But to the degree that we want to unpack four different parts, that fourth part, I think, also argues for an approach of liberalising drinking in parks. I think I took more than two or three minutes, sorry, but that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr Humphries. We'll now turn to questions from the Opposition. Ms Monroe?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the submission and for your comments. I wanted to pick up on that Anglo-Mediterranean aspect of drinking of different cultures. We heard from evidence earlier that there is a bit of a triangle of types of drinkers. You've got a base level, 70% of people roughly, who are moderate, responsible drinkers. In the top 30%, then you've got people who are drinking at very risky levels. And then of that 30%, you've got 10% of the total are actually dependent on alcohol. Are you aware of that being an Anglo-specific set of figures? And do you have any comparison between that and, for example, a Mediterranean-style culture?
I wasn't here for the earlier evidence, so I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to. We have to be, I have a, I'm coming at this with a bias, but we have to admit that there is alcohol abuse in all cultures and all systems, right? So the Mediterranean, that exists there as well. What we find is, they have an alcohol problem at a lower percentage of the people who drink in those cultures. But it is still there. I mean, there are people who misbehave in all cultures, so we're probably never fully getting off the hook. But Will, did you?
I might actually bring to your attention, there's actually a very successful public drinking trial in Canada, which has now become permanent. Now, Canada is especially relevant to Australia because they share a similar system of government. And more importantly, in this circumstance, they have a similar binge drinking culture, which I note, since the, since the Alcohol in Parks Programme began, their binge drinking culture has decreased by about 8%, according to Statista. I might just read a little bit about the Alcohol in Parks Programme. So it started in 2020, required amending the British Columbia Liquor Control and Licensing Act. And eventually, the report on the pilot found that park users didn't generally abide by the designated drinking areas, but despite poor adherence to those boundaries, behaviour was respectful. Police data actually showed no increases in the number of alcohol-related calls, indicating that the pilot had little impact on police resources. And there was not a significant difference in the average number of alcohol-related visits to emergency departments per week. And in 2022, from December, that became a permanent programme. And I think it's just a really interesting example of similar context to Australia, that where this has become a reality and a successful and popular reality. And there are other examples in American states, in Ohio and North Carolina, that no, Canada's a really interesting one.
And so that was in B.C. only, or is in the trial ran across British Columbia?
The Alcohol in Parks Programme, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to say something, Dr Humphries?
With indulgence, just continuing on from the issue of the differences in cultures. I'm an economist, the sociologist and anthropologist spend a lot of time looking at this in ways that I don't, so I, to some degree, am taking my lead from them. A wonderful paper by Anne Fox, 2015, talking about this issue in Australia, and this is the money quote, "If they perceive drinking to be a normal, mundane, non-glamorous, non-risky aspect of daily human life, they have a much greater chance of becoming sensible, controlled drinkers." So I think that's, it goes to the same part of the question.
Thank you, Dr Humphries.
In terms of the Victorian research, is that public, yeah, that you referred to?
That was in the submission. Oh, yes. Well, that was, that's in the submission. I think there's a reference to it in the submission, so you'll be able to find that on...
I'll provide that.
Is that the safer communities one?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Yes. I haven't had a chance to read through the link, but could you expand on that a little bit? Because I think that's a very interesting comparison for New South Wales, how, I mean, it's referred to as the patchwork of alcohol-free zones.
That's right.
So, sorry, that's in New South Wales, that's not Victoria?
The Victoria one comes after that, sorry.
Yep.
Prohibiting public drinking in urban areas.
I suppose the overall point there is that there's a lot, when there's a patchwork of different rules and laws and legislations, you're making unwitting criminals out of many. You might have one park where it's okay, another park where it's not. And so you don't know what's legal and, yeah.
The document will do better than I will off the top of my head, but I believe they looked in specifically in three councils and did a before and after and found no real change. So I would note, no real change is only addressing the third part of those four issues I arranged before. So it's not addressing the fact that people can switch to more dangerous behaviour. But even on the behaviour we're looking at of drinking, there was no noticeable change in crime rates or antisocial behaviour in those three. Well, in one area, there's no change in behaviour, so no one followed the law. So that was an interesting example of that. In all the other two, where people did change the law, did change their behaviour, there was no change in any of the antisocial behaviour or violence.
Okay. You refer to the ways that people drink in public versus private and the benefits or otherwise of drinking in different places. Let's say you've got bars or pubs that you refer to, parks, and then in private. Do you have any information about how people change their drinking habits from private? Like, if you're drinking at home alone, for example, any likelihood of those people actually changing their behaviour to move into parks and then suddenly change their drinking habits and... and engage in more social types of drinking?
I don't have that. You've basically asked if there's an elasticity, which, looking into this literature, it's exactly what I went looking for, but I guess not enough economists have done this yet,
Okay.
or sociologists. The elasticity would be non-zero. I'm highly confident of that. What it is, I don't think it's been studied as yet.
Okay.
Yeah, there definitely needs to be more research in this area. I would concur with Dr Humphries on this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms Monroe. Mr Ruddick.
Gentlemen, thank you for your intelligent and highly compelling submission and presentation. Now, I was, I think the inquiry will benefit from hearing a little bit more about this Canadian experiment, this trial, which all the data seems to be very positive. The police are happy, there's no increase in litter, no increase in social behaviour. And I think you even said, Dr Humphries, that there was an overall reduction in alcohol, probably because people, less people were going to. Did you say there was an eight percent reduction in alcohol in those trials?
Yes, I said that. So according to Statista, that's Statista, binge drinking in Canada has decreased eight percent.
Right, well, that's very encouraging. And I think at face value, people will think this will encourage alcohol consumption, but in fact, this evidence in a very similar jurisdiction to Australia is noticing a reduction in alcohol, which is, which is a good thing. But, so it was a trial, and it started in 2020. I mean, so I guess my two initial questions are, well, is it now going to become permanent?
It is now permanent.
It is now permanent, right. Now, this is just one local council area in British Columbia, correct? Well, I mean, so we're a long way away from them, but I mean, what about their neighbours? Are they looking at this and now introducing their own trials and seeing the success of this trial?
Yes, so in North Carolina, they've introduced social districts where you can sort of drink within a large portion of the CBD, if I think it's, I think it's Rayleigh? I'll double-check. Yes, you can drink in public places, public places within larger social districts in the CBD. Like with the Canadian example, it's been very popular, it's been well-received, there's no increase in crime, and there was even a statement from the police saying that they have not had an increase in police calls.
Okay, well, that's, I would like to know a little bit more about the North Carolina and the Ohio one, but in terms of within Canada itself, do we know if other, our local council areas have looked at what's happened in this particular council, so, well, that's a success, we should emulate that, or we're not aware that's the case?
Yes, I will come back to you in two seconds, sorry.
I like the idea that you're ready to unleash an army of responsible drinkers all over the world.
At this risk of overstepping, there's a comment before about less drinking in Canada, that may be the case, I'm not sure, but I'll just point out, the stats showed less problematic drinking.
Right.
Which I would hazard to suggest should be what we're focused on. The total amount of non-problematic drinks shouldn't be our concern, it should be the amount of problematic drinking behaviour, and that's what's been shown to be going down.
Was that just as a proportion?
I was just responding to the point about Canada. The Canadian statistics didn't show there was less drinking, it showed there was less problem coming from the drinking. So it may well have been the same amount of drinking, but there was now less binge drinking or antisocial drinking as a percentage of that drinking.
Yeah.
The total number may have gone down, we just don't have those stats with us.
Yes, we'll come back to you on that.
Okay. And so, Dr Humphries, in relation to what you just said, so you would say that there's been an actual reduction, like with a very similar trial, what we're proposing here, there's been a reduction in problem drinking, and you're saying that is because Canadians are no longer treating it like this forbidden fruit? You think that's an example of that?
Well, I don't want to overstate what I know about the Canadian study. I was just making sure we got clear on the record that we haven't got evidence that allowing drinking in parks led to less drinking, it's led to less problematic drinking, as far as we can tell, which is, as I said before, what I would, has to suggest should be the focus of concern. Because there can be a temptation sometimes to fall into the habit of doing a cost-cost analysis, where you go looking for the costs. Nearly everything in life is a trade-off, there are benefits and costs to everything, we should be trying to maximise the benefits, mitigate the costs to the degree that we can. And when we do that, we should, of course, look at the costs and see how to mitigate them, but it would be remiss of us to then lose sight of the fact that there is a benefit. So if someone is drinking happily without any negative social consequence from that drinking, we should put that in the benefit column of improving the quality of that person's life. And I'll note that the European countries with fairly robust drinking cultures are consistently showing up at the top of the happiest country statistics. Now, I'm not saying that's only caused by the fact that they drink, but it somewhat mitigates against the idea that it is a disaster for their happiness.
It is also worth mentioning that, according to the Abbey Foundation, which is a Scottish alcohol and drug treatment centre, Australia ranks at about number thirty-eight in terms of total alcohol consumed, but we have a much poorer, or more, we have more of a poorer relationship with alcohol than we do other countries that have a more liberalised culture and attitude towards alcohol, like Germany, Italy, France. Their rates of violent crime with alcohol is a contributing factor, as we heard earlier today, about half of what we receive in Australia. And the golden thread is that we have more prohibitions and they have less, they've got a superior drinking culture that allows them to have a better relationship, yeah.
So to threaten you with some econometrics on this, I believe there is no statistically significant correlation between these sort of anti-public drinking laws, or any sort of anti-drinking laws, and the level of antisocial behaviour linked to alcohol, and the amount of violence coming from alcohol. There seems to be a bunch of other confounds that are far more important in causing that antisocial behaviour than the restrictions on the drinking.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have, don't have any questions? Questions from you?
No, thanks, mate.
Yeah, I've got a few, thanks, Chair.
Bring it home.
Mr Humphries, you talked in your opening statement about a pretty widespread lack of awareness of these, of the alcohol-free zone law, is that right?
Just quoting the Victorian study that I mentioned earlier.
So would you agree that, in terms of looking at the efficacy of a law, you have to look at the mode of regulation of the law as well as the actual law itself?
I'm not sure what you're driving at with the mode of regulation. You'd have to, to the degree that a regulation was causing a benefit or a cost, it would have to first cause a change, and so you'd need to first unpack that part of the question.
So, for example, with these laws, there's obviously the rule that you can't drink in certain public places, but in contrast, I think, to maybe the ordinary criminal law, there's also various ways of regulating the rule. So, for example, there's public signage, there's powers given to both state and local government officials to confiscate or pour out alcohol. So would you agree that, in terms of measuring how effective the law is, you need to look at the mode of regulation?
Yeah.
As well as the rule?
Yeah, to assess the effectiveness of the regulation, and that would be a part of assessing how well they are at making sure people know the laws exist.
Yeah. And also through doing things that will influence whether the person will comply with the law in the future.
I'm not sure what that's driving at, other than the potential punishments they would face if they were caught.
So, for example, if you're a committed drinker living in a particular place, you go to drink in a public park in that place, and your alcohol is poured out on a couple of occasions, then you might cease to drink in that public place in future, because you know that you might lose your alcohol.
Or you tip it into a water bottle first before you went there, yes. But then, if they enforced it more, you would expect to see then more behavioural response. What the behavioural response is exactly is yet to be determined. Obviously, the goal is for the behavioural response.
Yeah.
That they show up in the sun, be social, act well, and don't drink. But the goal of legislation isn't always exactly how everyone behaves in response to legislation, but I agree with your point that it would change more behaviour.
Yeah, so it's quite plausible, for example, to infer that there may well be people out there living in various places who don't drink in these public places because they've had experiences with the regulation that leads them not to.
Yeah, there'd be people who've changed behaviour in all of the, I think I mentioned, five different ways, and one of them was to just drink less.
Yeah.
And which is the intent of the legislation, and I readily admit that that would be what some people do in response to this legislation, one of several, and we should add them all together.
Or drink elsewhere.
Or still drink there and just smuggle it in, which seems like a fairly easy thing to do.
Yeah. Or drink at home or in other public places that aren't as regulated.
Yeah, or in a drinking and gambling factory.
Yeah. And it's hard to, it's probably hard to unpack without some very detailed research what is actually going on in the community in terms of that, isn't it?
That's very true. It would be ideal to be able to find a bunch of cross-elasticities for all of these behaviours.
Yeah.
But as of yet, let alone finding a bunch of cross-elasticities, I haven't found one single elasticity in this field of study yet, so it would be great to have that stats, and we don't yet.
Yeah. So do you agree as a general proposition that if you're in a public place, that the number of intoxicated people in that place with you is going to bear a correlation to your risk of experiencing various antisocial outcomes, such as being assaulted, being sworn at, et cetera, et cetera?
It would depend on the drinking culture in the area, and I imagine that, and I don't just mean that to be flippant, saying Australia's different to Italy. Within Australia, we have lots of different cultures as well, and I don't just mean the cultures of where people are from. There's lots of different areas. If you went to a rowdy soccer game, and there was suddenly a spike in the number of drunk people around you, that would be one thing. If you went to a friend's wedding, and there were some more drunk people around you than normal, I don't think you'd have a higher expectation of getting punched at the wedding. So there's lots of different situations, and in some of those situations, what you say is, may well be true. I would warn against only doing the cost-cost analysis, though.
So let's go population-wide, taking an average of the whole population, the more drunk people you're around, the higher probability there is of you experiencing various antisocial behaviours. Would you agree with that?
In cultures that encourage binge drinking, that's probably true.
So you don't think that's true as a general proposition?
Well, I don't mean to do one of those, defend that the definition of is-is, but depending on what you mean by when you get drunk, there are plenty of countries where they have a higher number of people that have a couple of drinks in public regularly, with lower rates of violence coming from that.
Yeah, so let's say...
But if you mean binge drinking, like, sort of binge drinking type.
Significantly intoxicated people.
Yes, then I would imagine that is correlated, although, interestingly, the sociological evidence on that as well is that people who are drunk actually do have a higher rate of being able to control their behaviour than they admit. And this goes to that wonderful, I mentioned a quote from a sociologist earlier, that paper is really worth unpacking, where she points out that the way you talk about alcohol encourages how people respond to the alcohol. And if you tell them alcohol is this hidden, secret, special thing that you go crazy on, when the people then drink, they then do go more crazy. If you tell them it is kind of a mild, boring, normal thing, as they drink, well, those people, similar people, similar amounts of alcohol, different priming of what you tell them before they go in, and then those people don't actually get more violent. But we do have some of the former people in Australia. So to your point, yes, those people, if you're exposed to more of those, that could be more of a problem.
I mean, it seems to me, and maybe I've spent too long working the criminal law, but it seems to me that the large majority of violent things that occur in society of a significantly material nature seem to be linked to alcohol. Would you agree with that?
That's, I haven't looked into that, I wouldn't know, I'll take your word for it. I would wonder, then, if it's linked to alcohol through a drinking factory, which we're incentivising people to go to, or alcohol at home where people binge drink, which we're incentivising people to do.
Yeah.
Or people taking harder liquor, which we're incentivising people to take. It may well be the case that there's links between alcohol and violence. If that's the case, we should be encouraging more social drinking and less binge drinking.
And, Dr Humphries, when you say an alcohol factory, you mean?
A pub.
A pub or club or casino?
Yes, and I do love pubs, clubs, and casinos, so I don't mean to give the impression that we should ban them, but I mean, they do exist for the purpose of selling alcohol and gambling, and funneling everyone into such a venue. If we're worried about alcohol causes violence, putting all of those violent people into one tinderbox and lighting it is an odd choice. I mean, the fact that that tinderbox doesn't actually cause massive disasters in society perhaps indicates that the problem isn't as big as we fear, but it's an odd solution.
As a director of a community club, I take issue with what you just said. The Polish club in Asheville does not direct people into its club to drink and gamble only. It's a community-based organisation, it's a licensed club under the Liquor and Gaming Act in New South Wales, as literally hundreds and hundreds of clubs are, small and large throughout the whole state. You cannot say that with any possible way that you could support it with evidence, could you?
That some pubs out there make money out of selling alcohol and gambling? I think I can back that up.
You said clubs.
Sorry?
You said clubs, you didn't say pubs.
Well, I said factories, and it was helpfully explained, I guess, for the public record what that could mean. And I'm happy to accept that if people go into those venues, they're going to have more immediate access to alcohol and gambling, which I guess is the point here. So notwithstanding, I don't mean to offend anyone, if I have, I apologise, the point here isn't to offend, but funneling people into such a venue is an odd choice if we're saying that sort of behaviour is so dangerous that we need to avoid it at all cost. Putting them all together in a more dangerous environment seems like an odd response, but please don't ban pubs.
So do you think that it's a legitimate role of the state to protect people from antisocial behaviour in public places?
Absolutely. The antisocial behaviour laws should definitely stay on the books. I mean, there is a big difference, and part of the issue here is antisocial behaviour is creating a requirement for a response, understandably, and there's a response, but I hope that be, I hope that we would do that in such a way that we don't criminalise the otherwise peaceful and otherwise law-abiding people.
Except there's a direct relationship, isn't there, between the degree at which a certain activity occurs, when on some occasions antisocial behaviour is an inevitable consequence? There's a direct relationship between how much it occurs and the incidence of the antisocial behaviour, isn't there? You can't really separate the two.
I haven't looked at the stats, but I take your word for it, that seems like a reasonable inference, but that, I don't think, avoids the goal, at least we should have, to make sure that when we punish a crime, we're only punishing the people that cause it, not the people that could cause it, or that theoretically might cause it. If they don't, if somebody is having two glasses of wine while throwing a footie in a park with their mates or something like that, and they cause no problem, preemptively getting them in trouble with the law because statistically, if you run a regression, there's an eight percent chance they could commit a crime, I, I mean, I don't write the laws, but I worry about that sort of pre-crime approach to crime.
So do you agree that the quality of our public places and spaces is a legitimate concern of government? That the community has an interest, a particular interest in what occurs in public places, particularly, I suppose, important public places, such as main streets?
Yep, that seems like a reasonable suggestion, and along those lines, also, I imagine the government would have an interest in making sure they were vibrant and inviting to tourists so that people would wanting to be flocking into Sydney as the hub of where to go if you're in the southern hemisphere, and also to keep them safe.
Yeah, but it's not just about Sydney, is it? Because this bill's proposed statewide law.
No, I would like tourists to go to everywhere in New South Wales, I was just using an example.
Yeah, but do you agree that the impact of this law on particular areas is going to depend on the social composition of those areas? So, for example, if you've got a particular area with a much higher percentage of problem drinkers, do you agree that the effect of this law might look quite different there to how it might look in a certain part of Sydney?
It could impact differently in different places, although I would quickly add to that, it's not clear to me that places with a bigger problem should be carved out from what we're saying here. It may be that those are the places that actually benefit the most. If you can get people out of binge drinking at home and binge drinking in pubs, and actually get them to adopt a culture of one or two drinks while throwing the footie in the sun with your friends, pro-social behaviour, that actually might be exactly what some of those communities would benefit.
Well, I think that's probably true, that's definitely true in terms of an ultimate aim, but if you're realistic about a law that might pass into law on the first of September 2024, you're not going to turn a violent, problem drinker into a happy person having two drinks while they kick the soccer ball, are you? Rather, you're going to have that person drinking as much as they want in public places until they trigger the reactive laws in terms of police powers and the criminal law.
Well, two things, I don't know if they drink as much, because in a pub or a home environment, you would have fewer social guardrails, I suspect, or social feedbacks on the drinking. But I take your point in general, cultural changes don't happen overnight. I said at the beginning, we've got, we've talked about it a lot here, perhaps it's quite an interesting topic, but I'll reiterate, the cultural changes are quite slow, we shouldn't expect that if we create better incentives for better behaviour, we instantly get better behaviour, we would just start down the path of getting better behaviour over time. Of course, you never get to the end of that path unless you start down the path, but yes, I happily admit that you would not get the cultural improvements immediately, or even, it may take some time, I don't know how long it would take, but happily to admit that.
Can I just jump in there? We, basically, everyone in Australia gets a drinking licence, and to get that, you only have to just turn eighteen, and that gives you the right to then enter licensed premises. But that can be taken away from you. You can have your, you can be refused entry to a drinking venue, and you can be banned. I think, under the law, you can be banned from entering licensed premises. Should we infer a similar right on people to be able to drink in public and then have that right taken away if they misbehave?[1782.32]
It's an intriguing idea, what comes to mind there is potential orders that could be placed on someone if they had been shown to be a serial antisocial pest. Perhaps they're part of their probation, bail requirements, could be something along those lines. That goes a bit beyond my area of expertise, it seems like a fun thing to consider, but I don't know if I can add much value on that point.
In terms of the guardrails you were talking about before, I think you suggested that there would be more guardrails if a person is drinking not in licensed premises, was that your suggestion?
I was specifically thinking of in a social environment in a pub vis-à-vis at home, when I was mentioning that. So then that social environment where there are other people around you, hopefully other people that like you around you, then there are other people to, you know, pull you up off the ground or to hopefully course correct if you're about to commit a, a serious error in life.
Except there's less guardrails, isn't there, when you permit, for example, virtually unlimited drinking in public, in parks and the like? I mean, there's less guardrails, isn't there?
That's, I, I see what you're getting at there, that makes some sense, but when you say unlimited park drinking is kind of limited by how much alcohol you can bring with you, that's not really true in a pub, and it's not as true at home, I know you have to stock up your home shelves, but.
There's RSA in pubs though, isn't there?
Well, there is, but it's the same, there are, but the same study I've cited now twice and will for a third time. This is me relying on the crutch of the anthropologists and sociologists to do the work for me. That, that same study showed that there was a remarkable ability of drunk people to be able to play sober, act sober. And especially that seems to kick in every time they need to get their next drink. And I think from anecdotal experience, we all know that that is very doable, and from the anthropological studies, that seems to be very doable. So there doesn't seem to be a very tight limit on the access to alcohol inside pubs.
Yeah, yeah, that's my question, Chair, thanks.
No other questions, colleagues, well, thank you very much to the Libertarian Party for your submission, your attendance. And I don't think there are any questions taken on notice, was there any?
Yep.
There was, you're going to get back on one point, that's right, to Mr Ruddick, so you can.
Or Miss Monroe, I think it was actually.
Oh, okay, all right, well, thank you. Once again, thank you very much for taking the time to make the submission and for appearing, we very much appreciate it. And the Secretary Chair will be in contact in due course.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, that concludes the hearing.